On a quarterly basis. And we did this in part because the world of media has changed and we all know that, right? And there's so many cool stories, there's so many innovators in our market and region that we want to tell that story. And so I challenge you to find an article in any of our publications where there's bad news. It's all positive and it's not, it's not Pollyanna type news. It's important news about the things that are going on in our community. People that are making a difference in their place of business, in a nonprofit setting, whatever it might be. And so we've been really pleased with the way that's turned out and businesses have really underwritten that program so we could do that. It's an expensive publication, but we're really thrilled that it's something we can do on a quarterly basis. In a perfect world, every single household in this market would get it and every single household in the three county region would too, because I think what happens is a lot of people have a better understanding today of what's going on at the Research Park or at the National Centers for Animal Health, or at Danfoss, or pick, pick any company or entrepreneurs like Roger Underwood that are here in our community. And so traction's been a great way to tell the story and so is our podcast that launched here just a few months ago, that Eric Schmidt is the architect of both traction and the podcast is off to a really good start too. So lots of storytelling. We think that's a responsibility of our organization. I'll stop there. I'm sure you've got a lot of questions for Shannon and nothing for me, but fire away.
Thank you, Dan and Shannon. Questions?
So I have two questions, one for Dan and one for Shannon. Dan, we used to hear from you when we were number one in the nation for lowest unemployment rate, that that was actually somewhat of a handicap to our ability to recruit businesses. Have we seen any improvement in that because our ranking isn't so gosh darn low now?
Well, you know, I think, what'd you say, we're 13th now? It's, it's still not great, right? It's still really low. But you know what I think people find as they look at our market is this is a place that's growing. We're not growing like some parts of the country, but nonetheless, our market is growing. And so there's a confidence in coming here and finding people. At the same time, if a production company comes to the market, Daisy's a good example, they're going to pay about $28 base, base rate per hour. That will put pressure on the market. They will, they will find plenty of people to work in their facility. And so there's, there's that as well. The same time, if you think about a lot of the companies that land in the Research Park, more often than not, those people can relocate here or to this part of Iowa to work in those businesses. So you might recall even when eight, nine, 10, when we were the lowest in the country and pre-COVID, we were still routinely number, the number one MSA in the country for low unemployment, we still had economic development activity that was coming in front of you folks all the time. So it's, it's really not the barrier that it would, would seem to be, but we do have to demonstrate that you can find labor if you're going to come here. And in the Daisy Project, for example, they signed off right away because they saw the wage rates of production workers in the region said, we think we're going to be okay. So a lot of, a lot of it's going to be wage and benefit based. And if a company's coming in trying to just slide into the market and fit in, it might be a little harder. The incumbents usually have a better time, but I think when you're, you're paying above market rate for production workers in particular, you have an easier time.
So Shannon, the other question I have actually relates to getting the word out about, especially about Playa Ames, but also to live and work. I'm wondering what you're doing to market this to our students, because in my professional communication class this semester, I had visits from Susan Goyazda from the city and Carol Gieske from Discover Ames and Travis Tolliver from Main Street. And one of the things that surprised them was just how little the efforts that have been ongoing have made an impression on the students in that class, which, you know, maybe it's representative, maybe it's not, but you know, it's a bunch of business students. You would think they would be having their finger on the pulse of what's happening in Ames. So what are you doing to make students aware of this website and the socials associated with it?
Yeah, that's a great question. And especially since we are targeting college students, we really want to tap into Iowa State University since it's, since it's in our backyard. Social media, we're really trying to start that. And like I said, we only launched this May 14th, so it's still really brand new. I have an intern working for us this summer. She's going to really make sure that that's one of her efforts to get this effort out to our college students as well as our area intern program. So we have over 56 interns signed up now. I assume that that's going to grow for next week. So we will continue to highlight this and showcase this at our intern events as well to tap into the, into those college students.
Well, I hope if you find the secret to getting the students to pay attention to this sort of thing, that you share it with us and with Discover Ames.
Yeah, we hope with the bright colors and the, the fun graphics that it will help, but we also have flyers and some business cards that we passed out as well. So we're really trying to spread the message that way too.
Great. I hope it works.
Thank you.
I think that you might also just consider student government, we have joint, fall and the spring joint meetings. I think they'd be a tremendous pipeline. I think that there's a, their leadership is really interested in getting students engaged in the community. So that might be an opportunity to try and leverage, knowing you just started it. But the point is, you know, next, next fall, you know, connect with the president and his team. I'm sure they would embrace it and also our ex officio.
I think our biggest challenge to put a cap on that question is, is funding, right? You know, we're, we're going to do a couple of CyRide buses, I think. We're going to do some advertising with their, on those. We'd love to do some billboards, but those things all add up. So we're going to try and manage those as best we can. We've thought about wrapping a Fairway Semi that runs all over the state too. We've got a pretty good working relationship with the Fairway organization, so we might do something like that too. But I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be doing television advertising, but we don't have the resources to do that right now. So.
Other questions?
I've got one. Lots of good news tonight. Many good things happening in Ames. Could you just maybe touch briefly on some of the barrier, biggest barriers that still exist to bringing new businesses or, or new people to the community?
Yeah, there, there's three things really. It's workforce still, even though it's, it's probably better here. It's childcare and it's housing. Housing continues to be an enormous barrier for, for us in particular, in the Ames community. Although we're feeling a little better about some things that are happening. As we all know, it can't happen fast enough. And you know, if you really did a, a strong census of some of our larger industries here in town, Chevron as an example, a good percentage of those people live someplace else. Now, we've become a little more, more agnostic since we've grown our organization. If you want to live in Nevada or Huxley or Story City, that's great. But when you live in West Des Moines or someplace in Polk County, even though it's delightful down there too, we just prefer that you lived here, but we've got to give people choice, right? And so that, that's the thing that we continue to talk about as we talk about housing with, with, with you and the rest of the city is that, you know, when people make really good wages in our community, but they spend them someplace else, we lose out on that. Our United Way loses, we talked about United Way tonight, the asset process, churches, schools, Little Leagues, all those things that we want to support here in our community. If those dollars are being taken back to someplace else, they're probably funding their children's Little League program wherever else they might live. And so that's where housing is probably the biggest barrier we have. Now, I am, I am somewhat encouraged by the number of housing starts we've got across the region. We've got 14 workforce housing applications going to the state here next week. And we've got a couple in Ames. We had, we didn't have any last year. So that's encouraging, but housing will continue to be a thing that we have to continue to beat the drum on Amber, because that, that's where we really fall down as a, as a, as a market.
Any other questions?
I want to commend your work, amen to your comments about the work of Loji Peterson. I was at Farmers Market on Saturday, it was packed. It was just unbelievable. So.
She's really good.
We really appreciate the work that she does. And one of the things I do is I look at the license plates of the cars in the downtown area, just to see where people are coming from. And this really is a regional draw. There are license plates from all over central Iowa. It's not just a, an Ames story thing. I also appreciate the innovation with 515 Days. Had some challenges with the weather, but I think the pieces are there. Excited for that in future. But I also want to make sure I say thank you tonight. In addition to the work on economic development, Dan, you have specifically been a leader in the community of finding ways to marshal resources for, for businesses and individuals to give back. And so we don't say thank you enough. There are a number of projects that you've played individually a real critical role in helping steward those resources. So thank you for the work that you've done on all kinds of projects.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Haley and the Council of City Council and Steve for your ongoing support of the organization. The Board of Directors appreciates the way you underwrite the organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. All right, move on. I know 37, hearing on rezoning of and major site development plan and Plenary Plan approval for 113 North Dakota. Kelly Amelie.
Well, Amelia, it's getting set up. I'll just give you brief background. So if you recall that this property is, was before you earlier, almost a year ago, actually to discuss what the appropriate rezoning is in relation to our comp plan. The property has an urban corridor designation, which Amelia has up on the map. And at that point in time, you authorized the, the property owner, the applicant to proceed with proposing a beauty. You did not have a specific project in front of you when you initiated that, but the applicant this winter came forward with a proposal. So we've been working with the applicant. There's been a neighborhood meeting. There's been a planning and zoning commission meeting. All, that's all occurred before we get to tonight. And as you know, in the, in the council action forum, we really focused on the outcome from the planning and zoning commission meeting. So we're going to kind of work from that with you tonight to see if you're going to approve the rezoning. We want to note that there has been a petition filed from the adjacent proprietors, which means you do need a super majority vote. So you'll need five votes to approve this tonight, or you know, first reading, it's not approved on the first reading. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amelia. She's going to give you some good background about what's happened with the project and be ready to answer any questions you have from staff.
Thanks. So as Kelly said, this is designated urban corridor and part of the decision of why a residential medium density development might be appropriate here, as you can see on this map, is we don't actually have frontage on Lincoln Way. This property has only frontage on North Dakota. There is an intervening property to the south. And so access is limited to the site, which is, would hinder commercial development, which makes a residential more appropriate in this instance. Surrounding land use and zoning to the north along Best Ben Drive, our single family residential property is the closest of which to a unit, a townhome unit on this site is approximately 200 feet. We also have RL zoning to the west. Those sites are vacant, however, and to the south with that other vacant site, that's the intervening piece to Lincoln Way. And then to the south, we do have some highway oriented commercial across Lincoln Way. And then the core apartment building is just to the east across North Dakota. So as Kelly mentioned, we did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission with this submittal that you see on the screen. It has changed, but I wanted to give you a visual of what it looked like prior. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission, neighbors brought up several concerns that were shared by the commission. They were focused on in your council action form and are the five concerns on the screen. So the density of the site, there were 20 units, the height of this, of that unit, specifically the northern units. So this is oriented north, south, from, from left to right, just so I could fit it better on the page. Sorry about that. But the northern units, those northern four, the height was the main concern and the massing. There were some questions about how open space to the north could be accessed, trees preserved on the site, and then the setbacks along North Dakota and along the south side property line. So the resubmittal, as you can see, removed the four northernmost units. So it reduced four as down to 16 units, which has reduced the density and addressed several of those issues. I think mostly heightened massing to the north. Without those northernmost units, we've increased the buffer from residential properties. We've removed a very large retaining wall that increased the perceived height of the units, both along the north side of the units and along North Dakota. The open space is now more accessible and has been increased by about a quarter of an acre, which includes 12 additional trees being preserved. But the setbacks from North Dakota are the same. I did want to point out, so there is a setback deviation request. The smallest setback would be lot 12 where my cursor is, which is about six, seven feet. That is due to this jog in the right of way line. It does line up with the setback of the unit on lot 11, which is about 11 feet. The other units are at 13 feet. And that 11 foot setback is to the property line. There is a large amount of spacing to the sidewalk. You can see here still, more so than we would normally see. So that's the resuminal. Again, these northernmost units were the four removed. I think that's main, most of the details we wanted to go over, but we're happy to take any questions. I have more information on elevation drawings if you want, or.
Thank you. Questions?
I had a question. You mentioned in the resubmittal, 12 trees were allowed to be preserved. How many does that still mark for removal? Do you know, I couldn't find that in the staff.
Um, 29.
Other questions?
So I'm trying to find this in the, the staff council action form. I know it's in there. There's a note about the lack of access to some of the backyard space from certain units. And yet in the, the assessment pages, it says, well, especially Boltman Menkes' assessment, every unit has a backyard. Assuming these are individually owned properties, it doesn't really seem that the people who own the middle units would actually have access to their backyards, which seems to be, to be kind of a, a big issue. And I'm wondering how staff views that in the, the scheme of things? Because it, it seems like it's being downplayed, but if I bought that unit and I couldn't access my backyard, I think I'd have a problem with that.
I think, I mean, the applicant can probably address that a little bit. I think we, we focused on the deck component as creating at least an element of private usable space for each property. But you're right, one, two, three, four units, as, as we understand it, don't have direct access to the yard area that's there.
I will just also note the required common open space doesn't include those, those backyard areas. 10% of the site's required to be common open space and that's not with the private yards. The configuration is a little unique. As you brought up, these could be ownership units because they are on individual lots. But as a result of that, creating those lots, then you do have these private open spaces as well. So if they weren't on individual lots, there would just be a large common open space between the units. So that is part of the issue.
Would these all be owner occupied? Or is there going to be a mix of owner occupied and rental? Or what, what is, what is your understanding?
The applicant hasn't determined that yet. But again, since that we are plating these on individual lots, there could be a mix or they could be all owner occupied. They could better speak to the plan at this point.
Well, they could all be rental too. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
I have one other question. And it just left my head.
All right. Anyone else?
It'll come back.
We'll, we'll come back to you. Other questions?
Can you touch a little bit on, or maybe Public Works on the tree removal and water runoff?
So storm water runoff on the site, the arrows indicate the direction of runoff. All runoff from the newly created impervious surfaces will be directed towards the highlighted intakes on the east, so top side of the picture, that will go into a culvert that will then be discharged downstream. There is a swale on the west side of the site that will discharge into that ravine area after a check dam. You can see that kind of, those linked circles, that's the check dam, which will slow erosion. That is not taking any water from new impervious surfaces. It's just existing open space that will be regraded to create a swale. This is under the threshold required to submit a stormwater management plan meeting our 5B requirements, which is an acre of disturbance. There is an exception, you know, for inhibit filled development that doesn't meet that threshold. We did have them submit a stormwater memo, however, showing where these drainage areas would be, as well as rates running off from the site. And I think the main takeaway is that we're not sending surface runoff over the steep slope to the north. It's, it's draining to the east.
So related to that.
Yes.
I saw a reference to rock dams. Where are those?
There's two check dams proposed, one in this conveyance area between the units, and then this check dam at the north end of this swale. And so those help spread out runoff and slow the speed of runoff, which helps prevent erosion in those areas where you might have a more concentrated flow, given, given the, the length of those flow areas.
That wasn't my second question. I remembered what my second question was. I'm wondering, is there a reason we're reviewing this plan tonight when P&amp;Z hasn't seen the revised version? We got it very late in the, the process and the neighbors got it right before the Memorial Day weekend. It seems like it, it might be beneficial to have a little more time to look at it and consider some of these things. But I, I'm wondering if there is a, something compelling us to deal with this tonight, or if it's possible to have P&amp;Z review it? I typically, we aren't going to recommend something if P&amp;Z votes six, zero to not recommend it.
I would say procedurally, there is no return to the planning and zoning commission unless the council chooses to make that direction. So once they voted to deny it, and they stated their, their issues, right? So the applicant did try to address those. So it would not return to the commission unless you sent it there. I don't know that we have a lot of precedent of doing that. You don't see a lot of denial recommendations either. So that, that was unique too, as they walk through the different issues that were associated with the projects. I think, again, we wouldn't go there unless it was directed back by the council.
And is there a reason to not have, not continue the hearing tonight and?
I, I guess for me, you're having a public hearing, you're going to hear public input about this project. It is a reduced scale project. It is the same access points. Everything's basically the same except for the north edge of the property. So I don't really feel like it's a reinvented project where people wouldn't be familiar with what's here tonight, but maybe your, the testimony you hear makes you feel differently. But I would think that the comments will be very similar, maybe modified to some degree since the planning and zoning commission meeting. I think if you had seen a totally different street layout, all of a sudden you had two large buildings instead of 16 small buildings. Maybe that's a totally different story, but that's, that's not what's here.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So we really appreciate the work of planning and zoning, and it's not insignificant that they voted six, zero to deny this. And I, I want to go a little deeper into this. So I've got the, we've got the material that you provided and it's very thorough. There, there are some occasions when planning and zoning makes a decision because they feel like they have to make that decision because of the structures that we put them in. So certain land use limitations and requirements sort of dictate a particular outcome. But I'm not reading this to see that that's necessarily what the outcome was here, that, that they, they felt like they could have passed this under our legal structures, but they chose not to. Am I, is this helping a little bit? Do you understand my, my, my point?
I think that's completely accurate, right? It was a discretionary rezoning process. They had all the information available to approve it if they chose or recommend conditional approval. Or what actually happened was they heard public comment and felt they didn't know how to modify the project to address the concerns. And they didn't feel like they could conditionally approve it. So they decided to recommend denial. And then I identified for you these five, five issues. So I encourage them as part of the process not to vote, just deny without articulating what those issues were. So that's why you ended up with this list of, of specific things that they had concerns about. But they didn't know how to resolve them, because they didn't really feel like they were in a position to, to look at a mandatory redesign or to tell the applicant how to do a redesign of the site.
Great. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Kelly, or Amelia, can you comment on, there's a narrow piece of land, you identified that in your presentation, Amelia, south of this property. What can be developed there since that property, I mean, the rear deck is going to be essentially right next to that property? Can you comment on that?
So the, the setback of the units from the south property line is 10 feet. It's, it's considered a side setback because North Dakota's the front. The property to the south, the north property line would also be considered the side if it were to develop and also have a 10-foot setback from that property line. Decks are typically allowed to encroach up to three feet on a required setback, which is why you see the decks at a seven and a half foot setback. But the units themselves are setback more like 13 feet from, from that property line. I will also note that property to the south is under common ownership with the other vacant surrounding land. And I, I do believe the applicant reached out to them at the beginning of this process to see if there was interest in, in development at that point. I, I don't believe there was, if that was your question.
And so I think to go on what could happen with the neighboring property, it's currently zoned RL. Theoretically, it's, I think, I know it not theoretically, it is 64 feet wide. That's, that's probably the issue that we all see here is that's wide enough to build a single family home if they could get access to it, but not from North Dakota or Lincoln Way. So it'd have to come from the rear somehow. However, the urban corridor designation applies. So RL would not be the expected implementation zone for that. It would probably be some kind of commercial or multifamily zoning district. If that was to occur, potentially a parking lot could fit. It seems really hard to think a building would go there. 64 feet's not a lot, but, but that's pretty much it. A single family home, possibly some parking.
And then could you go to the, excuse me, the site plan that showed the larger area? Oh, go back a couple more slides. There you go. So those two pieces of property that are to the west, those are, what would that envisioned use be, given our 2040 plan and what, what could potentially be developed?
Yeah. So this is the, the land use map and the plan. So they're all designated urban corridor. And so we have yet to write that implementing zone. The general intent was for the most part was, was commercial or mixed use. The plan also says there's, there's cases where residential might make more sense just because of access limitations or there isn't feasibility for commercial. And the goal then was to like reinforce the, the corridors. So more of an urban presence near streets is the intent of that corridor versus a more suburban FS kind of approach to development.
So if someone wanted to go in there and remove vegetation, all the vegetation and build a commercial development, that would be an appropriate use based on the Ames 2040 plan? Is that correct?
Probably two parts to that question. I'll start with the tree removal. City of Ames has no tree protection ordinance or policies. So anyone can remove any vegetation at any time they want in the city. Second part is what's the appropriate use? You would need to rezonate to a commercial. So my guess is you would expect at least a master plan or some other kind of hearing process to understand what that development is. But yes, theoretically, we would support commercial there.
I was just trying to envision that, that narrow strip of land. If someone came in and they put a parking lot there and they cleared everything out, what would it look like from Lincoln Way looking south essentially?
So if that was to be a surface parking lot, you would end up with the typical 10-foot front yard landscaping along both streets. And then there would be what we call a high screen buffer up against the residential. So typically that would be a six-foot fence with a, a mix of trees and taller growing shrubs or something that would also provide some screening.
Well, given the fact that the deck's on the second floor, I was just trying, I'm just trying to envision what that, I'm trying to think long-term, what it just develops, what that might look like. And because it's, it is an entry into our, from the west, you know, from the community. So anyone can. And so the, along North Dakota, that is not considered a front yard then, is that correct? Or it is, but it's because the PUD is really reduced in terms of depth?
Both. It is a front yard. The PUD allows you to approve a reduction in the yard setback.
And we're, and council's being asked to consider reducing that setback from what to what?
From 25 feet to six and a half. From 25 feet to six and a half feet. At the closest point. Again, it's just.
Dog in the right of way. Go back to that diagram.
Seems very strange, the property lines.
Right. So the, the six and a half feet is for this unit. But the other units are 11 and 13 feet. And then there's several feet between the sidewalk, even there too.
I believe in the council action form, we might've said like an average separation of 16 feet from back edge of sidewalk.
Yes.
Whereas normally that would be 25 plus at least one more foot. So at least 26 would be typical.
And normally property lines a foot, a foot and a half inside of the sidewalk.
Right.
So it's, it's one way, but it's effectively a 10 foot reduction in the separation from the sidewalk.
Other questions?
Kelly, since you were in all of, many of the discussions, heard what P and C had heard. You of course know all about the Ames 2040 plan and also heard the neighbors, spoke with the developer. How do you feel this most recent version addresses both perhaps what you heard from neighbors as well as from P and C? And, and I know that you outlined some of that, but I'm just asking you to sort of reiterate that.
I think the, you're, you're starting with, from the, so policy wise, the city has designated this for some element of, of development, infill development. I think the density is the question. If it was lower density as, as zoned today, it'd be a few less units. I think from our goal of producing housing, we were, we didn't set a limit when we started the process. It's what fits on the property. I think that's the perspective you should have. We've, we've said this many times. In theory, we're looking for context sensitive development, not maximizing efficiency and prioritizing density. So if you're in like an RH zoning district, it's all about density and efficiency. Here we're trying to get a project that fits. So what's the trade offs that we need to address? It, it's going to be to some degree, what is the buffering? What's the compatibility to the surroundings? And then the other part though is what is our goal for producing housing? So you kind of, in this case, you kind of have two things that are attention. The change addresses as best as they probably can that buffering to the north. It, it does not address the, the number of oak trees that were brought up. We spent quite a bit of time trying to see if there were some significant oak trees that could be kept. It's just not really possible with, with this layout. So I think with the changes, what you're seeing is, is the applicants attempting to reduce that apparent height and proximity to the neighboring properties while still trying to have some, some element of an urban infill project. And I think that's, I guess that's really the question that's in front of you tonight is, is it, is it sensitive enough to the neighborhood's comments, but also at the same time trying to accomplish your housing goals as the city?
Thank you.
All right, we're going to open up, declare the public hearing on this item to be open. I have four people who are registered, like to speak. And after that, we will then invite others to come up. I'll call each individual at one's time and ask people to try and limit your comments to four minutes if you could, so we can get everybody in. We'll start with Don Eichner. If you want to come up, introduce yourself and you may begin your comments.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Don Eichner. My wife, Mary, and I live at 4538 West Bend Drive. The parcel of land that Mr. Jensen wants to rezone is present, uh, to presently residential low density and is directly behind our property. Mr. Jensen wants to rezone it to residential medium and build 16 townhomes on 1.6 acres. The proposed configuration is out of step with the West Bend neighborhood. We, Mary and I are the longest term original members of the West Bend neighborhood area. Mary bought the lot and Bob Buck built the home in 1974. We chose the area because of its unique qualities of the neighborhood, along with the privacy and beauty of the trees and woods. In 1974, it was a non-typical neighborhood since many of the lots included full grown trees. The trees behind our lot and on the south side of the ravine provide a buffer for us and the neighborhood. Bob Buck designed and built most of the homes in the West Bend, West Bend area. Each home tends to fit well on their lot with many tucked away between large oaks that were part of the original Litzel Farm property. I spoke with Bob Buck several years back and he said, I did everything possible to save as many trees as possible. He did that, he did that and was quite proud of the development. The woods in the ravine, ravine behind our, our property provide a beautiful view from our back porch. In addition, there are homes, homes to many animals and live in the ravine and surrounding areas. We see deer on a year round basis as they travel and often bed down on the winter on the slopes in the ravine. The woods are home to many other birds and animals, squirrels and creatures. I will note that the deer are quite fond of our shrubs and flowers, but it's a small price to pay. The woods are an important part of this neighborhood and one of the reasons people buy homes in, in the area. The Ames just received the Tree City USA status award and it's the second one since 1983. When people visit our home for the first time, a typical remark is, wow, that's a great oak tree in your front yard. And estimates of the tree's age is in the 150 years or more. Many of the trees scheduled to be removed from the lot we are talking about are large old growth oaks. On the far side of the ravine, after what seems to be clear cutting, we will be left to look at a very dramatic change in landscape and privacy. And I'd ask, how does that comply with Ames being designated a Tree City? Before this approval process goes further, I would ask, come out and walk the area and see for yourself the trees that we are, that are on the chopping block. I walked the area a couple of weeks back and again, over Memorial Day, I took some photos that I'd be happy to pass around. It's lovely this time of year. And so I'd be, I'd be happy to give you a guided tour and see the, the numerous trees that are scheduled to be cut down. They're, they are massive trees. It would just be a shame. If, is that what we want for our city? If I were the developer, I would be ashamed to destroy such a beautiful lot. The West Bend area is unique in the city. It's one of the few places left with trees from one of the oldest farmsteads in the city limits. There has to be a better way to treat this land. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
And if anybody would care to see, I've got photos I'd be happy to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Block?
My name is Liz Block. I live at 4618 West Bend Drive. That has been our address since our kids were eight and five, and they are now 53 and 50. Since 1980, some of my neighbors and I have watched hundreds of trees grow up in our woods, gradually filling up the spaces between the century oaks, the maples, the walnuts, the cottonwoods and all the other mature trees that were already there. Those trees in our neighborhood long predate the notions of the 2040 plan or an urban corridor. Our street, West Bend Drive, and the adjoining circles and cul-de-sacs are home to some 50 houses, home to families, couples, singles, little babies and senior citizens, tradespeople, professors, craftsmen and artists, and retirees hoping to stay forever living here bordered by trees and shrubs and abundant wildlife. The little woods bordering our homes place host to an ever increasing number and variety of songbirds, owls, hawks, squirrels, chipmunks, possums, rabbits, foxes, raccoons and deer. One adventurous mama raccoon had her babies in my chimney. A fat woodchuck once got very drunk on rotten apples from the tree near our backyard, much to the amusement of my teenage son and his friends. I think all my nearest neighbors have gone to some expense to add decks, pathways, sun porch, patios or floor to ceiling windows to their homes in order to better enjoy the living forest in our backyard. Certainly the view adds to the value and appeal of our homes. Dog walkers from the apartments across Lincoln Way leave their neighborhoods to walk along our woods and down our low traffic tree lined street. Morel mushroom hunters startle the squirrels bearing our trees of the future in the forest. Additionally, the woods provide a much appreciated spatial, visual and sound barrier between our homes and the traffic of North Dakota, the gas station and apartments across Lincoln Way, and that massive ugly five or six story misfit of a building directly across North Dakota. Though that building claims to be only three or four stories, if you drive north on North Dakota, you will find that the building grows into a much taller structure as the ground drops away. Just as Mr. Jensen's three story townhouses will vary in height with the terrain. Mr. Jensen claims that he's doing us a great favor by saving as many trees as possible. But look at the site plan. This is a clear cut example of clear cutting. Sticking a few little bean pole trees in here and there doesn't make it a forest. So there are the buildings themselves, plus the driveways, the sidewalks, a street to reach all the driveways and visitor parking spaces. That old song line, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot comes to mind. On the Ames City website, it says, every board or commission works to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Ames. We're trying to describe to you our quality of life, tied as it is emotionally and financially, so directly to the wooded land that protects and shields and enhances our neighborhood. We have a hard time understanding. Being a developer, driving down North Dakota, past that beautiful woods and thinking, hey, I think I'll buy that property, cut all those trees down and cram 16 three story townhouses in there and pave over all the spaces in between. Isn't there a better way to improve the quality of life? The neighbors on West Bend really hope so. And I might just add that the person that owns the rest of that woods is me and my partner. And this is our hope, that when I sell that land, I sell it to these people and that they keep the woods or develop it as a low residential area with houses scattered sensibly and wisely among the existing trees. My husband was an architect and he had a plan to do just that.
Thank you. Pleasure from, from clapping. Thank you. Megan Stevenson?
Good evening. My name is Megan Stevenson and I'm a registered nurse here in Ames. I have lived in Ames for more than 20 years and reside at 4530 West Bend Drive, an adjoining property to 113 North Dakota Avenue. My family and I purchased this home in 2023. I'm very concerned with the proposed development on many accounts, some of which my neighbors are addressing tonight. My husband and I also have submitted a letter to the council to more fully outline our concerns. Now currently, both south facing and north facing properties along the eastern portion of West Bend Drive have a very forested southern view shed due to the significant slope of West Bend. We've already heard tonight that Ames is recognized as a Tree City USA. It was also recently awarded the Tree City USA Growth Award status, which includes focus areas of tree inventory, tree plants and maintaining of trees. Ames recognizes on its city website that trees increase property of values and I agree. Such backyard views are uncommon in Ames and highly sought after. And I'm very concerned that the property values of the single family homes, mine included, will be significantly harmed with this development. The proposed development is going to remove 29 trees, some of which are 17, including 17 century old oak trees, destroying a large percent of the canopy coverage for the property. In their place, the developer plans to raise a prominent artificial skyline of townhome rentals, resulting in a double whammy hit to our property values. This development doesn't match the context of our neighborhood and Ames needs to be a good steward to the trees that were here before the city. Years ago, RES Development, according to its website, proposed professional oriented, contemporary luxury living options at 2100 Mortenson Parkway, of which still have not been built. Since clear cutting most of those trees, except for two lone birch trees, the neighbors across from that property on Mortenson, who previously saw a wooded lot, now have a view of a clear cut under, underdeveloped property that starkly contrasts with the wooded areas on either side. Who's to know in this economy, the same fate is not in store for 113 North Dakota. Now, city code states multifamily buildings, proposed abutting, single family or two family buildings should be of an architectural style that is compatible with abutting, lower density residential development. Despite the proposed variations in exterior materials, a generic three story townhome built over the stumps of historic oak trees is not an architectural style that is compatible with the adjacent single family one and two story homes, carefully situated to preserve as many trees as possible. In a sense, it is not context sensitive. Now, my husband and I lived for 17 years at East 13th Street in a split level home with a large living room window that looked directly across the street at a very large, very long and very ugly municipal cemetery or training wall. And for every day of those 17 years, I looked out my window at that retaining wall. Now I am grateful that that retaining wall proposed on this property has been removed. But for the last five years, when we lived at 515 East 13th Street, my husband and I started saving diligently to purchase a home on a wooded lot in a wooded neighborhood. I often found myself driving through the West Bend neighborhood on my way to Jack's, hoping that the right property would come up on the market and it did. A beautiful mid-century modern home built in the seventies with the back of the house filled with floor to ceiling windows to bring the outdoors in. Now I find myself in the position that a developer wants to replace our hard earned backyard view of a beautiful forest with a view of a generic rental units that could be built anywhere in Ames, but which the developer has decided were best placed over the bulldozed remains of oak trees older than Ames. Thank you.
Thank you. And Matt Stevenson?
My name is Matt Stevenson and I live at 4530 West Bend Drive, adjacent to the proposed development. I'm a triple ISU grad. I hold a bachelor's, master's and PhD in wildlife ecology. And so while most of my arguments tonight are going to focus on the specifics of the zoning requested, I cannot stand up here and not also make a plea for the trees. Using the tree inventory provided, there are 17 oak trees on this property that I estimate to be older than 100 years and the largest six are closer to 200 years. These trees are likely from the first generation that started regrowing after settlers cut down nearly every large tree in the state. An old growth oak grove of this size and age is rare, even more so within city limits. To quote a colleague in the natural resource department with whom I discussed the situation, cutting down those trees would be a damn shame. After reviewing the revised proposal, it's clear that Mr. Jensen has simply removed the most outrageous feature of his opening offer so that he can appear to have made a concession while making no other substantive changes. At best, he has addressed two of the five issues identified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we urge you to follow their recommendation and vote against rezoning. This revised design still does not fit the context of the neighborhood, still does not fit the vision, definition or development guidelines of an urban corridor, and still does not meet the requirements of a medium density planned unit development or PUD. The Ames 2040 plan identifies the proposed parcel as an opportunity area for a new urban corridor land use. However, urban corridor was never formalized in the municipal code. So all we have to rely on is interpreting a single slide from the 2040 plan. Medium density PUD that Mr. Jensen is proposing is inappropriate for several reasons. The goals listed for the urban corridor on that single slide are to respect past development patterns, enhance the street environment and redevelop oversized parking lots, vacant buildings and underused sites, none of which this proposal achieves. The 2040 plan also provides guidance that an urban corridor should be of an intensity and density appropriate for the context of the area. As we have heard repeatedly, this proposal also fails on that requirement. If I haven't convinced you that this proposal violates the spirit of the urban corridor concept, then I will point out that this proposal doesn't even meet the requirements for a PUD. The proposal claims the infill exemption to the two acre minimum for a PUD. However, this site is not infill. The property was the home of the Litzel family farmhouse for nearly a century before it suffered a fire. Mr. Jensen acquired the property at the very first sale after the fire. So there has been no opportunity for another buyer to rebuild a. no opportunity for another buyer to rebuild a single-family home on a very desirable lot. Setting the precedent that a developer can acquire a disaster-damaged property and put up a rental complex in its place before anyone else has had an opportunity to rebuild should make Ames homeowners very nervous. The establishing code for a PUD also requires context sensitivity, which the people who know the context best have established is lacking. To quote the staff report for this proposal, "In order to grant the deviations, the PUD compatibility standards are required to be met. Given the extreme flexibility afforded under a PUD, the city must hold developers to the stated purpose of the overlay, or else it amounts to a 'get-out-of-zoning-free' card." Mr. Jensen is proposing an awkward, generic rental complex in the middle of a beloved urban forest. His proposal to cram 16 units onto a parcel smaller than the allowable minimum, built over the ashes of the previous family home and the stumps of ancient oak trees, is at best heartless and uninspired. A medium-density PUD is the wrong zoning for this parcel, and his project would fail to meet the requirements, even if it were."
Thank you. All right, that's all the people I have that have registered. Is there other people that want to address council? Luke? We'll let Luke go, and then you can, and we'll continue on.
Good evening, Council. Luke Jensen, 2519 Chamberlain, and I represent the applicant, L J R E C, and I do my business under R E S Development. First off, compliments to staff. They have done an excellent job of understanding this project. We have had countless meetings, working through nuanced details. We understand that this is a complex site. There's a lot of things at play with this particular location. We also know that the urban corridor that is, that just came out with the 2040 Plan certainly alludes to this type of project. About 11 months ago, council gave guidance to pursue this very thing. And tonight, you hear from the neighbors. I'll address a few of those things, but I acquired the property. It was on-market. It was not a private-party sale. Everybody could have had an opportunity to buy the property, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. I would also, if Don has those pictures, I would love to see those. As far as I know, trespassing is a criminal offense, and I'd like to make sure that that does not happen on my property from the neighbors. And if you guys would like to go out and see it, please come with me as a property owner. A few other things I'd just like to touch base on, the council or the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was a struggle for them to identify specifically what they wanted to see differently. And so Kelly and I, Amelia and I, had met afterwards to kind of digest and keyed in on those five items: density, height massing, open space, tree preservation, and setback deviation. So I feel like we've addressed four of those by reducing the unit count from 20 to 16, creating, removing a retaining wall on the north side that gives more space from the neighbors to the north. And just a quick note on the neighborhood, I think that you're hearing from the West Bend neighbors, but there's also other neighbors that are impacted by this development, too. There's the core to the east, there's come-and-go to the south, there's additional multifamily and commercial opportunities. So I view this site as part of a greater or broader neighborhood than just the West Bend neighborhood. The last item is tree preservation. As Kelly mentioned to open, there is no, there's nothing preventing anybody from cutting down trees. I could go over there tomorrow and cut every single one of those trees down. There's nothing that's stopping me. I have taken an approach, a responsible approach, to listen to the feedback from the commission, to listen to the feedback from the neighbors, and make practical things that still create a viable project for the community. We just heard from the workforce group, the Ames Chamber, about the need for housing. We don't have a lot of townhome opportunities in our city. This checks the box and says, here's a viable option for people that want to come to our town and stay in our town with meaningful housing opportunities. The last one, I think this is more of a nuance, is setback deviations. This was worked with Kelly and Amelia extensively to make sure that we had the proper understanding that that's how we got to the site that we have here tonight. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your guys' time and support of Alternative One.
Thank you, Luke.
Could we be able to ask a question?
I'd prefer that we, if we're going to do that, we should be able to ask questions of other people.
I just want to point out, typically, we do let the applicant have rebuttal at the end of public comments and have a chance to speak.
Luke will call you back up. Please.
Good evening. My name is Justin. I'm another concerned West Bend citizen. I live on West Bend Circle.
We have a last name, Justin, then you can proceed.
What's that?
Last name, please.
Justin Landheiss.
Thank you.
I'm at 212 West Bend Circle. And again, the main reason we moved to the neighborhood was, as you come down Dakota, you see the entrance to this glen, and it's such a high-quality forest matrix that continues into the Clear Creek watershed. And with an environmental science and a forestry master's, I've been watching this proposal with a lot of concern. It's easy to take for granted our tree canopy in Ames. I think if you travel around Iowa, you can see that this is, it's rare. I think we have over 30% forest cover in the city, and that can change rapidly. And this oak woodland, as has been noted, is a rapidly disappearing ecotype, and it's a top-burden pollinator habitat as well, which is another initiative of the city. And the proposed development still has an outsized impact. There has to be a way to better balance the needs of the citizens and the, all the other inhabitants of the city. And it's been noted, these are old-growth trees. Under our current climatic conditions, we cannot get these trees back. There's too much carbon in the atmosphere, they will grow weaker. We cannot regrow oaks like this in the current climate conditions. It just will not happen. Also, the water-holding capacity of this oak woodland is huge, and if you have spent any time in the adjoining woodlands, you can see that maybe the stormwater plan, even if it's approved, is currently not working for the stream banks in Munn Woods and Emma McCarthy Lee Park and anything downstream. They are collapsing currently, right now. You can go in there and walk the stream and see them failing, and the city pays expensively to maintain these. And it's cute to see the little, the little rock dams there, which will become nick points for the overland flow as soon as we get a four- or five-inch rain event. So I don't think the current stormwater management plans are accounting for these massive rain events that we're having. You can also spend some time during a heavy rain on Dakota and see that there are already problems in the road, which becomes very dangerous for traffic coming up and down the hill. This is going to add to that. This, as well, the units removed from the steepest part of the slope, that's in a normal-sized rain event, like, yes, that's going to help. But again, we are not seeing normal-sized rain events. We're getting all of our rain and a few big events, and so it's just, it's not practical to assume that there is not going to be erosion on that part of the slope. There is still so much density on this small piece of land. Additionally, the greenbelt connectivity from west to central Ames is extremely important to maintain. As you noted, coming in on Lincoln Highway, you have a lot of commercial development, and this is really one of the first big pieces of green space that you see that connects all the way to central Ames, to Iowa State Campus, much of which has already been cut in preceding decades to make way for apartments. And I think it's important that we note what we have left, and although there may be not specific rules to protect some of this high-quality woods, maybe there should be, because, again, this is not, this is not something that we can get back by planting trees in a high-carbon atmosphere and waiting for them to get big. And as has been noted repeatedly, the surrounding properties aren't vacant. I think that's important to touch on, too. Like, it's not an accident they have trees. It takes some doing to maintain tree cover, because over time, we will just lose canopy. It's a losing game. It's so hard to get back something that isn't just scrub trees over time. So this is going to have point source effects on the property and for the immediate traffic on Dakota, and then the downstream effects, too, in the, in Munn Woods and the entire Clear Creek watershed are going to be significant. It's already overburdened and already at great expense to get heavy equipment in there and fix the existing storm sewers. And so I'm not quite sure if this is taking into account the fact that there's already too much pressure on the watershed immediately downstream from this. They're the closest public property in Munn Woods. You can, you can walk in there and you can see it right away. They're just, at some points, the bank has slumped off 30 feet straight down, and it's encroaching towards walking trails and city infrastructure.
Justin, I've given you a little bit of leeway. Could you kind of bring your comments to a close?
Yes. In summary, the council should reject the proposal as it is still too dense for the site.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Ryan Lilith Jeffrey. I tried to submit with the online registration for comments, so I don't know why that didn't work, but for the first time ever, I've actually prepared a speech standing at this podium. So that's novel. I'm a little different than many of my neighbors in that I actually think townhomes are a truly ideal usage for this lot, capable of providing important densification to the city and making a good transition between the neighborhood and the larger street environment of Dakota and Lincoln Way. That said, I strongly oppose this particular development plan and consider it a hazard to the watershed and Clear Creek, completely out of character with the neighborhood and lot, a slap in the face to homeowners and every other development in the area that followed all of the zoning restrictions, and a repudiation of the city's supposed commitment and pride of being a tree city. Mr. Jensen and staff have represented that many of the variances from code being asked for in this plan are justified because our code isn't designed for townhomes. That was brought up multiple times in the P and Z meeting. But we have many townhome developments in the area that already fully conform to current zoning restrictions. In fact, at this moment, at the very tail end of Ames' peak real estate season, I can find about 40 townhomes for rent and 20 townhomes for sale, indicating that we aren't even in that sort of supply. They range in price for rentals from $675 a month to $3,200 a month. That's a pretty good range of available options. I can't really see that there's an urgent demand for these strange micro-townhomes, which forego many of the traditional advantages of houses over apartments, up to the fact that some of the units don't even have access to their own backyards. I understand that the PUD overlay is designed to allow flexibility in zoning restrictions and to encourage creative development, but I still struggle to see anything creative being done here. Creative would be figuring out how to maximize units on the lot while fitting in with the character of the lot itself and the neighborhood. Creative would be working to develop a lot while minimizing ecological damage. There's nothing creative about calculating how many micro-townhomes can be squeezed into a development if you're allowed to ignore all of the zoning restrictions and environmental considerations. It's also hard sell to claim that all these tiny units are necessary to make the project financially viable. The lot cost $150,000. In the original design, that translated to $7,500 in land cost per unit. Cutting it down to 10 units, that might be able to be done without so much damage, would only be an additional $7,500 in land cost per unit, which just isn't that much compared to the well-over $300,000 that Mr. Jensen mentioned as a possible sale price for one of these units in the neighborhood meeting. If staff and council really want to experiment with development free from zoning restrictions, I would ask it be done somewhere other than a beautiful lot at the expense of over a dozen century oaks and a beautiful elm grove. For those truly committed to this experiment, freed from the constraints of zoning, I must point out that you could probably fit three to four of these units in your backyard. Not kidding, I measured several backyards in Sunset Ridge. Any of them can fit up to three, and the larger ones could fit four, complete with driveway and inaccessible scrap of turf. More seriously, such an experiment would fit much better among the apartment developments along Highway 30, which they closely visually match, or failing that, I estimate that 48 of these units could be built on Mr. Jensen's still undeveloped property on Mortenson near University. I think that three-story micro-townhomes would still be out of place there, but at least it wouldn't be doing any more damage to the trees and watershed than was already done when he clearcut the property eight years ago. Lastly, as I mentioned in my letter, I'm in the early stages of putting together a group of neighbors to develop the properties to the south and west of Mr. Jensen's in a way that fits the neighborhood and the forested lot. This development would likely be 12 to 18 townhome units and a community resiliency center with access from South Bend. It would also not include cutting down a single tree with a diameter of over two feet. We would consider extending that access from South Bend to Mr. Jensen's property, which would improve access and traffic flow for the residents and enable, potentially enable better layouts if the development was more in character with the neighborhood. I grew up among these trees, and I moved back to this area to live amongst them. Development has already caused increased runoff to Clear Creek, which has collapsed the trails I used to walk as a child. Seeing the city so cavalierly support the destruction of such beautiful trees and further damage the environment that I grew up in is truly heartbreaking, and I hope that council will take a better approach. So please reject this destructive mockery of the zoning codes and tell Mr. Jensen to design something that better fits the neighborhood and Ames' claimed ideals. And in an additional response to his apparent threat to clearcut the lot because he can, you're right, he can, and I would strongly encourage council at this point to consider passing laws that restrict the clearcutting of ancient trees in this city. Plenty of other communities in town have them, or in, plenty of other communities in the country have them and protect their trees. If we're serious about being a tree city, we should protect ours.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Amy Erica Smith. I live at 4923 West Bend Drive. I also registered online, so there's something that's not working with your online registration system connecting to something else.
My apologies, because we had some technological challenges. We'll look into it after the meeting.
Okay. Just wanted you to know. All right, so I also support the development of townhomes. I like infill development, and I think we need, we need more better-density options, and I also agree that we have housing issues in Ames. Our housing issues, however, don't seem to be of the kind that this is going to fit, and it's at tremendous cost. So I've lived here in Ames since 2012, when I came here as an assistant professor, like a lot of, you know, relatively young professionals, no longer so young. I came here and immediately loved the trees in the city. That was one of the first things. I thought, this is a beautiful place to raise a family, and I love living around so many trees. It made Ames feel like home to me. When I encountered the West Bend neighborhood, I fell in love with the neighborhood immediately. And in November 2023, we found basically the perfect house, in a wooded lot covered with these old oak and cottonwood trees. I love the lot that I live on. To be clear, I am not personally going to be strongly affected by this development in that my property is good probably, I don't know, at least a half a mile from the development. And yet, I think Ames as a city is going to be affected by what this is going to do to its image. So there's a first, a minor question here that we cannot resolve probably right now in this meeting, which is how many trees are going to be clearcut on the property. We heard 29 from staff. Somebody else had at some point counted 47. I was just looking, when I heard the 29 number, I was like, whoa, that's not what I thought the number was. I looked back at the map. The map is really hard to interpret, but to my best count, having done the count two or three times to figure out what I can see, I think it's 37 that are counted as being clearcut on the map, which is less than 47, which is the number that I... number I'd gotten from somebody else. I don't actually know how many are being clear cut. I think it's over almost certainly over 29, 37 ballpark-ish. There may be some that are being planted in addition to count for some of those that are being clear cut. Of course, a new young tree is not the same as an old growth tree, as we know. I also see on the map that the property, so the property is cutting by my count 37 and keeping 28 that are on the property, so cutting more than half of the trees on the property. The property is also, the the plan is also taking credit for saving 11 trees that are not actually located on the property, that are located on the edges of the property that have some overhang, some canopy that is overhanging the property in question. This isn't the image that I think we want here in Ames or that I have come to cherish in the West Bend neighborhood. Just this month, we celebrated the Tree City USA Growth City or Growth Award for growing in line with the tree with the preservation of the tree canopy, which is fantastic. To celebrate that event, we held a tree planting in the Marston Curtis neighborhood where we had a grant from the Iowa DNR that came in and funded the planting of 50 trees in the neighborhood. We planted 50 new trees, and now we're talking about cutting down 29 or 37 trees in this neighborhood. 29 or 37 old growth trees cut down while we just planted 50 new trees. This isn't, this feels to me like a problem that there are issues here. We are undoing something good that we just did and undoing our reputation as a tree city. I would also say that these changes are out of character with with the West Bend neighborhood. What I love about the neighborhood is the careful attention that developers in the 50s through the 70s took to try to develop the neighborhood in line with the existing tree canopy. Their beautiful homes nestled under trees in line with them and in ways that preserve as much of the treescape as possible. And they proved that it could be done. That is creative work. I would strongly encourage council to try to support that kind of vision for how to develop neighbor where we in a place where we all that is already known for this. Why clear cut and build generic apartments or, sorry, townhomes that will most likely become rentals? Build generic rentals, rental townhomes, when we could push for something that incorporates the existing treescape into more creative and beautiful developments that are in line with the image. Driving down, my experience of the West Bend neighborhood, yeah, my experience of the West Bend neighborhood is one that is mostly not along North Dakota or Lincoln Way. But if you're driving through the city, one of the first places that you see the tree city image is driving down South Dakota or North Dakota. So driving down North, what we're doing here by cutting into the treescape is affecting the image, part of the image of the city. The urban corridor designation, I was able to find yet another slide that referred to it as preserving identifiable images of the community for better or worse.
Amy, I've given you lots of leeway.
I would suggest that the treescape here is an identifiable image of the community of the community that I want to belong to. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Jordaning. I do not live on West Bend, but I live north on North Dakota in the Chelsea area. I've heard a lot of people talk about their, the importance of the aesthetics and their attachment to the area. We all go through the intersection of University and Lincoln Way, and we see the grand old sycamore. We love that tree. In this area, some of those 200-year-old oak trees are their grand old sycamores. That's been a landmark. I came here as a 17-year-old to go to college. I've gone other places and I've come back, and that's kind of an entry thing to the west part of Ames. I can understand why the adjacent neighbors value it so much. But I think there's other reasons to give careful and perhaps critical consideration of this project. It's proposed to put either 16 or 17 units there, two two-bedroom units. There's not going to be one car in a two-bedroom family. There's not going to be one car in a two-bedroom rental. There's going to be quite a few vehicles and leaving that location because the rest of the community is east of there, the University of east of there, they're going to generally navigate three lanes of traffic to an intersection that has two different elevations, and headlights are always shining directly into the other people's windshield. If you come up from 30 or come down North Dakota, you see that every evening. I think it's a distinct safety hazard to have a lot of vehicles very close to that trying to get into the opposite left turn lane or coming from Union or coming from Lincoln Way, trying to get into that driveway. The next thing that I've heard about tonight is Clear Creek. And Clear Creek is going to be less clear when you have three rows of townhomes, three stories high, all throwing shade in the winter on their paving. There's no infiltration, there is no absorption, and there's going to be a disproportionate amount of salt used, and that's going to go into Clear Creek, either down the hill or in the sewer and then into it. That's not going to help. I think that's a responsibility of the city to maintain those downstream areas as open, public, green nature areas. I also recognize that that area just south of Lincoln Way along North Dakota is a choke point for the wildlife that wants to travel from West Ames. And the city of Ames is investing substantial effort and resources into a large, open park area just south of Quebec out there. That's a choke point to get to the Mun area and stuff. If we reduce that, available green space and and land and and opportunity for deer, wild turkeys, whatever it is, to gather up before they have to get across North Dakota, it's going to segment that. Everybody has heard about the breaking of of traffic patterns in wildlife areas by infrastructure and roads, and I think this will contribute to that. I think it will be something that degrades both the new area being developed out west and the Mun Mun area. So I encourage you to look at this fairly critical because it's got a lot of negative aspects to it. Safety of our of our population, our drivers. If you spend much time on North Dakota, you already know that it's viewed as a clear shot to Highway 30. So traffic does not putter along there. And
Thank you.
Listen to the people that live there because that's that's their environment and they're emotionally attached to it, but I don't think it's good for the city in this particular setting. We need housing, but perhaps not there where it takes down a landmark trio of oak trees or damages the park system going east and west. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of our comments. I am Jennifer Johnson. I live at 228 Park Ridge Circle. I've lived there since 2015, and I actually purchased the property in 2019 after spending an entire year trying to find something that was similar to it and couldn't find anything in the city of Ames. So I bought in this neighborhood specifically for the same reasons my neighbors have been stating. My concerns are more about the safety of this property development. The last proposal I heard said that it will be a right turn out only from the property and only a right turn into the property, which brings up two problems. North Dakota there is extremely steep. And as he just mentioned, it's going to be a minimum of 16 cars, but probably upwards of 32 cars every morning trying to take a right turn out under North Dakota, trying to get to work. That hill then comes to an end at Lincoln Way and coming from South Dakota where it transitions to North Dakota, trying to make that left turn is a blind left turn already, and you're going to have an additional 32 cars every morning, people trying to get out and in and everything in there. It's not a safe space. With it being a right turn in only, that means that people cannot access their properties from North Dakota. They will not be able to turn into that area. The next most expedient way to do that is to go where Jack Sporting Goods is, come in on South Bend, come down West Bend and take a right turn and then turn into this property. That hill from West Bend is also extremely steep, and you're going to have another 16 to 32 cars coming every night through our neighborhood trying to get to their homes. And in the wintertime, this is going to be extremely problematic because our neighborhood is one of the last neighborhoods to get the streets plowed because we are not a major thoroughfare for the city of Ames. And so that many cars coming and going on a daily basis from that place is going to make a lot of traffic problems and make it very unsafe for all of us who already live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Others?
Hi, my name is Teresa Albertson. I live at 4612 West Bend Drive. My backyard backs up very close to the property that we're talking about tonight. I would ditto everything my neighbors have said. I won't waste your time. I'm very impressed with their eloquence. But I would mention one thing that I was really ashamed of when this conversation started tonight. Our city staff started the conversation by saying, here are the reasons why this development can be done at this location. In the letter that I sent you about a month ago on this topic, I had mentioned it appeared to me that the city staff was leaning very heavily toward how to make this development project happen. I've worked many, many years in local government, in city government, and our role as staff was to look at these issues, especially potentially divisive issues from both sides of the coin. And I'm not seeing that from my staff, who's representing me as as a citizen, and I was very disappointed to see that. Thank you so much for letting us come up and talk about this. I also want to mention many of us in the neighborhood were caught off guard with the 2040 plan and and the zoning recommended change. And I'm sorry that we did not catch that earlier when it was going through. I know it's kind of a pain to come back later and and have some words about it, but really thank you very much for hearing us out and and really considering this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just a minute, Luke. I'll be closing public comment because after that, there'll be no more public comment. Anyone else? All right, we'll close. There are public hearing to be closed. Luke, if you want to come up and counsel if you have questions, since you're the applicant.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the question again about if these are going to be rental or owner occupied or a mix of both.
Yeah.
Gone both ways in public comment.
Sure. So I think it, I think it's fair to say it's a mix. We've just recently developed a project on the north side of town called Hayden's Ridge. That was 44 townhomes. They were ranch and two-story units, and we have a mix of, I'm going to say 65% owner occupied and 35% rental. So again, market conditions, this is at least a year from delivery. Lot can change, but we'll see what the market is. But these are designed to have that flexibility to be for sale, owner occupied, or investor owned rentals.
Joe, question?
I was wondering if you could clarify the number of trees for us. We heard a claim that it was more than the 29 to be removed. Can you speak to that at all?
I don't, I don't know the specific number. It's in the engineering report. We can look that up. I mean, I think I can address the top, the topic of trees at large is that recognizing that they are an important feature to the community. That's one of the things that I heard from the zoning commission and the neighbors. I don't think there's anything that I can do that will appease the neighbors. I don't think that there's a tree that's saved or moved or replanted that's going to appease the neighbors. What I can do is adjust the site, which I've done, and I believe that was somewhere around 14 trees that were scheduled to be removed that were now that are now staying put. In addition, we are planting many, many trees back into the subdivision, and we've prioritized the northwest corner as a buffer. So on this plan, the northwest corner, that's where a heavier concentration of trees will be planted.
Thank you.
Luke, Kelly told me to ask you about the townhome units that don't have access to their backyards.
Yeah. So Kelly brought that up Friday, probably Thursday or Friday as just a topic, a suggestion that that could be is access off of the, actually through the garage. There's a opportunity. Each one of these units, if you can imagine, has slightly different elevations for either a patio or a deck. So some could be 12 feet in the air, some could be eight feet in the air. The other thing that we can explore is stairs off of the decks, the ones that have have decks to locate some stairs to come down and land into the into the outdoor space, the backyards.
The other question I have relates to the height. I saw some reference in this massive packet of documents to about 33 feet, give or take, for these townhomes, and they're being built in a kind of terraced style. So we might expect that the ones that are on the higher terraces are going to look much taller than the ones that are on the lower terraces.
Yeah. So if you can, can you pull up, Kelly, the, the, yeah. So the ones that are on the south are probably at the highest base elevation. And then the middle ones, and then they drop down more substantially to the northern northern row of units.
If you want Amelia Maida an exhibit of elevations, that can probably more clearly represent everything.
So the northernmost units in North Dakota have an elevation of about 998 feet. The units in the middle, you can see, have an elevation of about 1,007, and then at the end, it's about 1,008. So they kind of step up towards the south. They're really, because of the cutting required to make flat building pads, going to be one to three feet at max taller than North Dakota, the building pads.
Did you say that again? I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you just said.
So so the building pads, because of the cut required, the grading required on the site, most of the the units that are closest to North Dakota will only be one to three feet higher in elevation.
Oh, you're saying the first floor, the garage floor will be one to three feet taller than North Dakota, not the total building?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So right on her exhibit, the 1,008, the 1,007, the 998 are the finished floor elevations of those pads. The numbers on North Dakota are the range of elevation in front of those units. So the 1,008 finished floor pad, North Dakota's 1,008 to 1,010 in that area, and it goes down downhill from there. And then what what probably is not clear on this one is that that south row of units, that's the high point of the site, they're cutting a substantial amount out of the grade there to provide fill for the rest of the site so that the finished floor is being lowered from that from the existing at the south property line.
So based on that, the northern units will be essentially one, essentially a story below the next units, correct? You're going to have like nine foot of difference
Yeah.
between in that little short area. So I'm curious, how are you going to handle that from a water and grade standpoint?
Repeat the question?
I'm thinking you have in a very short area, you have nine foot of drop. And I'm just thinking about water and drainage and how, can you explain what you're, I think part of the issue is, you're packing a lot, there's a lot on the site. So I'm just trying to understand how you're going to handle it. I understand it's a challenging site.
Yeah, yeah. So like lots one through six, some of those will actually have a patio. So it'd be like a tuck under garage. So it'll be like a tuck under garage. So from Brook Hollow, if you're standing at Brook Hollow and looking up at lot six, that'll be a three-story building. But from the backside, from the south side, you'll just see the second and third floor.
I'm looking more at your lot 11, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. It's the, well, that's nine foot of difference between, it's the, I'll call it east of Hallbrook.
Yep.
You have, if this is correct, I'm just saying there's a nine foot drop, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, so are you saying that those garages will actually be underground?
No, they won't. Sorry, 35, 16 will be partially covered.
So Mayor, are you trying to get at the runoff that's created by that grade that goes from northernmost?
When you have, when you have a very, I'm sorry, I'm digging into the weeds. And that's really, that's your soil engineer, your storm engineer responsibility to take care of that.
Yeah. Well, if I may, just a note on, with this revision, 64% of the site will be open space. That's a substantial amount of space to have as open space. This is only a 1.69 acre site. And so by removing the, those units on the north, that unlocked an additional 20% or a 54% increase as outlined in the staff report. Two other just quick things, if I may. There's full access off of Brookline on the north side. So that's not a right in, right out only. That's a full access intersection. So drivers will be able to go north or south on North Dakota from there and not have to wind through the, through West Bend. One other just note, we talk a lot about density. We're at 11.83 units per acre. That's getting close to the minimum that's allowed in the RM zone. In addition, these are two-bedroom apartments or two-bedroom townhomes. So these aren't four or five bedrooms. There's not four or five cars. These are one or two vehicle people. There's public transportation right on Lincoln Way. There's been a great deal of investment along Lincoln Way with services and opportunities. So I think that you'll see a mixed use of transportation, which is exactly what the urban corridor calls out for. So I'm happy to answer any more questions. I would leave it with, 11 months ago, I asked for permission to pursue this type of project. It was in line with the 2040 plan. Spent time with staff pursuing this, and we're here tonight and want to take the next steps to have something ready to go later this fall or early in the spring and deliver meaningful housing to our community.
Thank you. All right, counsel?
Mayor, can I ask staff a couple?
Sure.
Can I make a quick comment first?
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to, I guess in defense of staff, note that our planning department's responsibility is to look at projects and interpret the code and identify ways that either a project does or doesn't meet the code. And I think that the discussion here tonight and the way that the plan has been adjusted based on the feedback provided at P&amp;Z shows exactly the way that our staff does listen to the community and work to try to balance the various interests. And so I'm quite uncomfortable with the comment made that seems to somehow imply that staff is compromised in one way or the other. So I just want to put that on the record before we discuss anything else.
And I would only add to that, across the board, if people have concern about our staff, they really need to talk to the council. So the buck stops up here. These folks are working very hard in our direction. So it's clearly a misplaced criticism to attack the integrity of our staff. If there's concerns, it's up here.
Gloria?
So, I don't know, Kelly, Amelia, can you tell us, after the review of the City Forester, how many of the old growth oaks were deemed unhealthy and probably in need of taking down? That factors into the total number that would be saved?
We, Amelia can tack onto this, let me just look it up. We really focused on three, that at least I was very focused on three that are at the front of the project. One of them was in the right of way. And that one was definitely deemed to be in decline and should be removed regardless of even having the project go forward. There were, we really looked at at least one of them in the middle that was not able to be retained, was probably the best or the highest quality tree. But it was right in the footprint of lot 11, I think, if I'm reading that right. And then another one was probably marginal but could be retained. But we didn't survey all of the oaks for their health. We really kind of focused on those front ones that were near North Dakota. Do you have any other thoughts on that from our visit?
No, sorry, I'm trying to get your number.
So she's trying to look up the number, but the comments that are confused about the total tree removal. So Amelia's trying to pull that back up for you. So we didn't do a full evaluation of the health of everything. We really focused on those, we were taking the approach of comments about North Dakota, the front setback, the appearance on that, what tree preservation could be done there. And that's what we were focused on.
The other question, as Amelia's looking for the trees, has to do with one of the comments that was made about the fact that there's already a lot of pressure on the watershed downstream. And we have the memo from the developer that was reviewed by Public Works for runoff. To what extent does that take into account the future impacts of too much runoff or the impact of runoff in areas that are not immediately adjacent to the site?
This type of memo would not. It's not a watershed assessment. It was explaining how the volume of water is generated from this impervious area, how it'd be controlled and released from the site. And in this case, primarily through the city storm sewer system. And then Public Works would evaluate how that outlets into Clear Creek. And if there was an issue about, a concern about increased erosion immediately from the project, they would have made recommendations about fixing something around the outlet. But watershed management is part of your stormwater management program. And you have a stormwater fund to address those things. So it'd be kind of beyond the scope of this scale of project.
And am I right in saying that because of the type of project we have here, they aren't required to retain water on site?
Yeah, I think that's, so we made a change maybe five or six years ago to promote infill by exempting sites that are less than an acre of impervious area from mandatory stormwater quality and mandatory detention facilities. So there is no particular storm event that's being detained on site. So when we see the larger green field developments, it's totally different. We're doing a lot different treatment measures for those projects. But this is under that threshold, so there is no detention on site. In all likelihood, after talking through this, my impression from Public Works staff and Amelia was it would require in-ground detention facilities. We're talking about a very expensive facility that would have to be installed to try and meet detention if that was actually a requirement.
Did you get a count?
Yes. So just, so we're all aware of where I'm counting from. There is the removals plan that was in your packet. And then also the applicant submitted a tree inventory. I have created my own layer that puts those together with the tree types. So that's what I'm going off of. I believe there's 21 oaks on the site. One appears to be dead and will be removed. That was in the right of way that Kelly mentioned. I think there's nine in that northern area that will be protected and 11 that will be removed that are in good health, average to good. And those are mostly in the developed area of the site. So there's a few, basically where some of the driveways and the units will go on the south side of the site in Brook Hollow. One on a lot, lot 10, that we looked at with the City Forester, that it's just not possible to preserve it given the location of the unit. And then there's one in the right of way, just north of Brookline, just north of the access that will need to be removed for grading of the access.
Other questions?
And I just wanted to mention, what I put on the screen, I tried to kind of color code so it was easier to see that the green is of course what will be protected kind of around the perimeter of site. And then the red, of course, is what's going to be removed in the interior. There are also a few trees in decline or dead that are black on your screen.
Helpful, Amelia, thank you.
Kelly, I think I had asked this earlier too, and Mr. Jensen talked a little bit about it. But can you speak to what the traffic engineer said about this particular entrance into and out of this area, given the number of units that would be there and the number of cars that might come and go from this location?
Right, so to clarify, it is a full access driveway, does not right in, right out. There was discussion when there was two driveways about the southernmost driveway being right in, right out. It was kind of, ultimately, the project changed to this so we could have internal access to all the homes with full access at one point. So that will be allowed. They do have to cross over lanes. It's outside of the turn storage area. So the traffic engineer believed of the choices available, this was the best. It's just, this driveway is just south of the core driveway, so they don't quite align. But this meant an offset requirement of the traffic engineer. So I know everyone's going to disagree with the way the traffic engineer looks at this. And when you think of the peak hour, it's roughly a half to 1.8 trips per unit is what's assigned to like an ownership housing. It's even less for rental. So the traffic models don't assume 32 people are leaving at one time if that's what the population of this is. So he believed with the projected traffic levels during a peak hour, it was an allowable driveway point to have full access. And that's how we've been working on this for the last two months, I believe, since we got to this layout from the original layouts.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Is it possible to put up an aerial map of this area, like a Google Maps?
Yeah, what, just a top-down view.
And while. Presentation, I think.
Pardon me?
It wasn't the one in the presentation?
No.
We have our, we have our land use map, but that's color coded on top.
More than that.
Yep. And while you're doing that, could you clarify again, because Gloria asked the question very well. Just to clarify, it's 11 trees that are being?
No.
Oaks.
11 oaks, and then?
21 oaks, one at the end.
That's total inventory on the site. Nine are retained, 11 removed, not counting the ones that can't be saved anymore.
So 11 oaks. And then the total number of trees?
Removed? 29 is what she did.
And that's again, based on the inventory and I've created a layer.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I just thought it would be helpful for people to see, yep. This is a very heavily wooded area. And I found this to be helpful when I pulled it up on Google Maps. So I thought I would just have everyone share it. So there's a little bit of context here that we're taking out a total 29 trees out of pretty substantial wooded area. So I appreciate the concern, those 29 trees. But there still will be a lot of trees left remaining. And there will be additional trees planted. So we have to take sort of the long view of these things. I just thought that visual was quite helpful.
Other comments?
Kelly, can you touch quickly on the number of deviations? I think there's maybe some confusion about the flexibility of the PUD and whether the number of deviations is more than usual.
I think in the addendum to the report, there's a specific table of deviations. So the majority of those are because of the creation of the lot lines for the individual townhomes. If there was no individual lots and it was just 16 apartments, you would have a front setback and potentially the deck encroachment on the south property line. But all of the other ones about internal setbacks from streets, the lot area per unit, all of those issues would go away if it wasn't individually platted lots.
And the individual plating of lots is what allows it to be a mix of rental and owner?
They could do condos without creating lot lines. We don't control condos, whether they're ownership or rental. So that could be done. But in this case, they pursued the lots to make them fee simple lots with potentially for sale units on them.
But you're just multiplying that deviation every time there's a new lot, basically.
Probably, unless you're meeting the much larger suburban townhome standard. So like, so what I would have said is, for this layout, whether there's lot lines or not, the only one that is affecting the layout is truly that front yard setback.
Any other questions for staff? Any discussion?
I think my final question actually has to do with whether or not, having been in these conversations, do you feel that tonight we have heard the concerns that you have heard at various meetings from the neighborhood? Like, is tonight representative that with what we've received in our communications packets that, like, there's nothing else out there perhaps?
I can't answer because I haven't seen your packets. I can say what you heard tonight was very much in line with what we heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the tree preservation, the concerns about the woods, concern about runoff, architectural design, townhomes not townhomes, some of the urban corridor questions. Again, a lot of these are up for your decision-making on how it applies to the urban corridor designation, whether we have a zone today or not. Your decision was if PUD can be an implementing tool for that, until we do write a zoning district. But I think you've heard, I think you've heard all the topics that we heard previously.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion, otherwise entertaining motion.
I want to take a second. And I know I speak for counsel in just being very appreciative of the thoughtful civil comments that we heard tonight. For many of you who've never been to a city council meeting before, and I thought the comments were very well thought out, very articulate. And we appreciate the time you took to help us to make an informed decision. Saying a lot of thought went into those decisions. This is a hard, these kind of things are hard for us because they require a lot of balancing. I do think that when you look at the number of trees that we will be taking, that would be taken out under this proposal versus the benefit to the community as a whole, I'm going to be supportive of this proposal. But I want to be careful that this is not seen or interpreted that somehow we don't like trees. That's the wrong interpretation. And it's just the nature of any kind of development that there's going to be some trade-offs and balancing that has to be done. And so I can totally appreciate, I always try to put myself in the position of those that we are going to be impacting. So I try to go where you are. And so it's not that we can't see things from your perspective. And I'm in this neighborhood a lot. I run on that area all the time. And I also appreciate those trees. But we have to make hard decisions about the balance for the community. So that's, I just thought it'd be important for us to clarify that support of the proposal somewhat doesn't mean that we don't care about the tree canopy of our community.
All right, entertaining motion.
I think I'll be moving alternative one. Just want to make sure that.
Approving their request for 113 North Dakota, including first reading, major site development plan and preliminary plan.
Yeah, that's, I move alternative one.
A second.
Roll call.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to take a minute too and second what Tim said. Just speaking for myself personally, my desire for infill projects is pretty high because it is either sprawl or infill, right? That is how cities grow. Ames will grow. And so what we're trying to do here is plan for the growth of Ames. People that aren't here yet, maybe aren't even born yet, that are going to want to make Ames their home in the future, right? And we need more housing to see that happen. Ames has a housing shortage. The nation has a housing shortage, right? And so infill is so important to me. I think it's a responsible way to grow. So I think Tim said it well about balance. You know, I certainly hear and understand the neighbors' concerns too, though. You know, it is hard and emotionally hard. I know you're tied to your properties. I know, I know that, you know? So I will be supportive of this motion, but it's not because I'm heartless, right?
Anybody else?
I just want to say that I think this is one of the hardest votes I have had to take in a very, very long time. And I don't think I'm the first one voting. And I may still be sitting on the fence as this comes down. What's hard for me is knowing that Mr. Jensen is absolutely right. He could go out there with a chainsaw today and take down every tree on his property and we couldn't do a thing about it, despite the fact that we're a Tree City USA. And that says a lot about what, where we're putting our money in our mouth. And I do think that we should be looking at whether it's possible for us to have an ordinance that restricts removal of trees if we believe in that Tree City designation. But right now, we don't have that. And so I've, I just, I sympathize so much on all of this, but I don't know that the result would be saving the trees, whichever direction we vote. And maybe that's saying, I don't know what Mr. Jensen would do with his property if we voted this down. When we approved this initially in, well, was it June of last year? The discussion did not have a specific project. One of the opportunities was a project of maybe 18 townhomes, but there was also the possibility of anything else that met R M standards. And so we have been introduced to this project along with the neighborhood. And I think we're still kind of learning about it tonight as we listen to what you have to say. And I greatly appreciate all of the input that we've gotten. And I've made a lot of notes about future things that we might consider if the state of Iowa lets us.
Yeah.
And just a quick echo again to thank everyone. And yeah, I've lived 30-some years in West Ames. And so I know that area well. I do think, though, that in this situation, the reason I asked Kelly the question was to make sure that everyone does feel heard and we have heard you. And, but this is, to Tim's point, one of those challenging pieces where we have to balance, how do we grow responsibly with making sure that people have those homes that they have loved and enjoyed over time. And yeah, so I will be voting in the affirmative for this as well.
Rachel or Amber, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'll keep it very brief. I would echo a lot of what's said already. I grew up in West Ames and I think a lot of people in my generation are looking for an opportunity to be able to buy a home someday. And this sort of an opportunity, we have very little of in Ames. And I think this would be a good step towards, you know, having more housing in the Ames Community School Districts, having something affordable rentals, you know, allowing maybe 16 more families to be a part of our Ames community. But it is a very tough trade-off. And so I'll be supportive of the proposal, but I really thank everyone for coming here and making your voices heard tonight.
I'll just note quick, I agree with a lot of what Bronwyn said. I think infill development is hard to do. We know that. We've tried to do it for a long time and we're just really now starting to see some projects come to us. I think we are a little bit fortunate in Ames that most, if not all, of our developers are local people. And I think they take a lot of pride in trying to get to a point where not everybody is happy. That's, it's not a utopia by any means. But I think there is a lot of intention on trying to work with the neighborhood and the city to make a project that everyone can be proud of down the road. So.
Roll call.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Vetter.
No.
B D Hanson.
Aye.
Motion carried 5-1. All right, we're going to, next steps, Kelly, we've got our second reading on, in two weeks.
Yeah, so typical calendar for second and third readings is successive meetings. So June 10th and June 24th would be the prospective dates for second and third readings.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene and go on to I-NOR 38. All right, we're going to move on to ION number 38, hearing on land purchase option for surplus land, Harrison and Welbeck. Kelly?
Good evening. You have two actions before you tonight with this item. So we gave you the overview of this last week. I'm not going to go through that unless you have more questions. You're asked to do two things tonight. Formally, to enter into an option agreement for the property. I want to let you know of the agreement that was attached to the report. We had some small updates of terminology, basically scripters types of updates to that document. So we have that fresh and clean for the mayor to sign if it's approved and then to return it back to the applicant. So it's, no terms have changed. What's key in this is there's a few contingent conditions in terms of timing. Workforce tax credits must be awarded. The applicant must enter into a development agreement with the city to address some of the elements that are in the MOU that we had in terms of electric efficiency, affordability, ownership, some of those elements that are not on the table necessarily tonight, but were expectations of the council previously. And then the key to this is, we didn't want to transfer the property without having a commitment to actually do the project. So there is a timeline for the applicant to move ahead by the end of this year. And that means they must receive entitlements from the city in terms of the PUD rezoning and a subdivision plat to allow for this to then be completed. Then the second element, which is, which is key to this, is they need a resolution of support to apply for state tax credits. So that's the second element tonight. So we have two resolutions that we're looking for.
Thank you. Questions for staff? All right, declare the public hearing on this item to be open. And I have three people that have registered so far. We'll start with Lauren Nichols. You're welcome to address counsel.
So I want to start off by saying, most government contracts always have three bidders. And the reason for three is because nobody's the subject matter expert. There's only one proposal or bid proposed. And the failure for two other bids kind of shows that there's possibly some misconceptions or possibly some coercion. That's something that should be done. You pride yourself on these local developers. Jensen and Hunzaker are two independent ones that own most of the property around Ames that control the demand of housing. Why can't they just throw out a proposal is the question. I found that, you know, the business representative that was here was really chummy. It just gave off bad ethics. The housing area, the has, the property has been maintained as a, basically an informal HOA. Last time I was here, I gave the city a opportunity to find one billable work hour of maintaining that property in the past 20 years. They have failed to do so. So that just reinforces the fact that for 20 years, the neighborhood has been maintaining this property. And after 20 years, the city wants to sell it to, for a dollar so we can lose our green space, have construction noises, and have 14 families cramped in there. The, you guys have stated many a times that Hyde is unsafe and high traffic for its size. You have said repeatedly that you will address the issues. No, nothing has been done. Further, Welbeck is also not a very good artery. That would be putting at least 14 to 28 more vehicles on the road coming down Welbeck. That road is not built for a main artery. And so that should be something that can be, that should be considered. I know you guys are lovely dreamers. You like to get ideas and you like to move forward. I just ask that you think first. The response time for the fire engines to reach that neighborhood, does anybody know what that is? And is that under, you know, the proper timing? Because the lowest, the quickest fire engine is on 13th Street. With all the new expansion and development on North Ames, you should be really considering the civil, the civil responsibilities that the city has. That would be fire department. At the very least, we had a house burned down a year or two, just to lull the neighborhood over. And most of it was because the fire engine couldn't get there at a decent time. And some of you may stare at me with, you know, a jaundice face. I don't care. I've been, had 20 years in the military. I don't care. There are over 60 kids in the neighborhood that regularly play in this green space. Those lots are for wildlife and green space. They also, you know, have geese and everything. The kids like to look at those and, you know, the traffic sucks. The original idea for the PUD was it's supposed to fit into the neighborhood. These three-story, two-story townhomes don't fit in the neighborhood, especially 14. I see what you're doing with the other locations, kind of the same thing on this. You guys want to have more housing? The problem is, so young families, they don't want townhomes. They'll buy them if they have to, but they want homes. Homes are houses. I know most of you guys have nice houses, have homes. They're not townhomes. So townhomes are only if you have to. And about the infill, I just drove down Grand and there is at least three vacant lots. Duff has at least two to three more vacant lots. And there's countless vacant houses in Ames. So the infill is not as near dire as you guys, you know, think it is. I make, I make my rounds around Ames as a letter carrier. So I know there's a lot of vacant houses around here and the people don't want to sell them. That's between them and whoever. But these empty, empty lots, there's one on 7th Street and Grand, which is a very large lot as well. Stating the work housing tax credit that this developer is depending on. It states, "A small city set aside for this program is available to eligible projects within the 88 least populated counties in Iowa." According to the 2025 census, Story County ranked 90, meaning they are not within that 88 least populated counties. The city council is truly concerned with housing. They spent $4 million on a park just across the street, which really nobody's going to use. And I was an inner-city kid growing up. I sure as heck didn't have any ice skates. So I don't understand how these inner-city kids have ice skates.
I stopped me, generous with my time. Could you please draw your comments to-
Yep. So you could have built a, you know, housing location infill where the new parking lot is and kept the old parking lot. But obviously, you know, priorities are different when, you know, you're in charge and you're not listening to the actual, you know, residents of the city. So with that, that's all I got. And keep me mugging.
Anna? Dwayne Myers?
I'll make mine a little brief. Again, it's one of those, it's just a frustrating situation, and you guys have pretty much already said that infill is the way you're gonna go, so it's hard to come up here and have a conversation when previously you just said infill, 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 infill. We're talking another infill project. The problem I have with this is it's been what I will deem as force fed, right? When this was proposed a year and a half ago, we had public information meeting, we had property owners come out and talk, they voiced their concerns, brought that to council, said, hey, we're gonna go ahead and do an RFP for this project. Did an RFP, got zero bids. Extended the RFP, and continue to get zero bids. Seven, eight months goes by, you do an MOU, you hire a headhunter to go find somebody to be able to make this work to satisfy that need. That's where I have issues with this. And then, to top it off, the donation of a dollar is a bit ridiculous. Property taxes have just gone up in our neighborhood, and it has not been on the value of our homes, it is strictly on the value of our land. I've got the eight adjoining property owners with their square footage and the assessed land value only. Ranges between $3.60 a square foot and $7.20 a square foot. The size of this property here would put you anywhere between 284, we'll say it rounded up, to 570 rounded up. And we're just gonna donate that for a dollar. That's where I have issues. Lastly, I'd like to have it received and filed, that Iowa Code Section 364.7 specifically states that a city may not dispose of real property by gift except to government body for a public purpose. And I can give that to you if you need it. Do you want that or no?
It was 364.7?
364.7, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else? I have no one else who is registered to offer comment. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Steve, would you just comment on the, what we're doing regarding response time for fire department up there in north in terms of another fire station?
Well, in long-range plan, we're, first, we're gonna relocate Station 2 as a priority, and then, after that, council has to prioritize a number of projects, and one of them is to move another fire station up north, yet to be determined location, to help handle the response, improve the response in that area.
And Mark, can you, are you familiar with Code Section 364.7 and the comment that was just made? If so, can you comment on that, please?
Yes, the gentleman is correct, there is a code section that says that. On the other hand, there's case law that the city can give gifts for economic development purposes. I mean, the city can't give gifts to private parties, right? Except for economic development purposes, that's the one exception in the law, and that's based on some constitutional provisions. And it's, we actually looked at this when this, in our office, when this proposal first came up. We did something similar with a Baker subdivision, so it's, you know, we're convinced that this is allowed under the law because it's for economic development purposes, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark. All right, questions for staff, comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Move alternative one.
Which is?
Prove the option agreement resolution for supportive state workforce housing tax credit program. Make modifications that approve the option agreement resolution support, hold a public hearing and request additional information from staff with no approval at this time. Oh, sorry, those are the three options.
All right.
Yeah.
Right, option one's what you're, alternative one, thank you. Roll call.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, my apologies, thank you.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Vetter?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to item number 39. Cory?
Thanks, Kelly.
Good evening. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider our third and final amendment for the current fiscal year. The purpose of this amendment is this year and has traditionally been to adjust the budget for CIP modifications, some minor operating budgets, and then, a reflection of the actual debt service that we've had issued over the past year. It should be noted, the expenditure increase is just over $1.4 million and a revenue increase of just under, over $280,000. So, I think it's also worth noting that a majority of the increase in expenditures is out of our internal service funds, which are funds set aside to fund key expenditures like these. So, we're happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have.
Thank you. Questions? All right, declared public hearing and the final amendment to fiscal year 24, 25 budget to be open. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none, declared public hearing to be closed, entertain motion on resolution approving final, approving amendment to current budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Vetter?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll, item number 40, hearing on the 2024, 2025, Clester Street Water System Improvement. Oakland Street, Oliver Avenue to Hawthorne Avenue. Any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, declared public hearing on this project to be open. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this project? Seeing and hearing none, declared public hearing to be closed, entertain motion accepting report of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Just nice to note that we have another one of those projects that comes in significantly below the engineer's estimate. And I think it's particularly helpful, we can sort of figure out what streets are going for, it's just a matter of the surface area, so this is very encouraging, this came in so far below.
Those who have motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried, entertain motion on resolution approving the final plan specifications and awarding a contract to Manassas Incorporated of Ames, Iowa, in the amount of $650,346.84.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Junk?
Aye.
Vetter?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
All right, we'll enter 41, 2024, 2025, South 16th Street Roadway Widening. Questions for staff? I think, Justin, there was a question, I think, regarding, can you talk about the schedule in terms of how that's, because that's, for those who may not be aware, is between university and the Vet Med.
Correct.
Bike trail, which is on the south side of the, I mean, north side of the Vet College, which is heavily traveled, and it happens to be a location where a few cars go during game day, so.
Yes, so this project was planned really closely with Iowa State University, not only the veterinary medicine college, but also Iowa State Athletics. So it will be a two-year project, so as soon as we can get a contract and bond approved, we will proceed right away with a pre-construction meeting and expect to see construction happen right away. The initial stage of construction will be on the east end of the project, from that Vet Men Trail over to Riverside Drive. The plan right now is to maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction, excuse me, one lane of traffic in each direction, through the project, no matter what construction work is happening. There is a clause in the contract that we should need to stop construction, or be it a phase where we can no longer impact any traffic during game days, which is late August of this year, so it's a really narrow timeframe that we've got to work in. However, we'll get to a point and judge where we're at, at that point in time, the construction will stop during football season in the fall. And then, once construction season opens in spring of '26, it could be March, April, whatever Mother Nature throws at us, construction will pick back up with remainder of the project with the intent to close the project and have it completed by August of 2026, the following football season.
Thank you. All right, declared public hearing on this project to be open, is there anyone who wants to address council on this? Seeing and hearing none, declared public hearing to be closed. Council, I will mention that Steve and I met with President Winterstein last week, and on behalf of Iowa State University, they greatly, they really appreciate the investment that the city's doing on this, it's gonna be a big help, and appreciate staff working closely with Iowa State on terms of schedule. And in case you're wondering, there's a temporary stoplight that is hung over there, and Iowa State and staff have talked a lot about that, and that's gonna be, they may put that in at a later date, not replaced in the. At their cost, yeah. At their cost. It will not be part and parcel of the final project, I presume it's gonna, it may be there during construction essentially to control some in and out, so. All right, entertain motion, accepting the report of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried, entertain motion on resolution approving final plan specifications, awarding a contract to Construct Incorporated of Ames, Iowa, in the amount of $3,625,832.10.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vetter?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Move on to item number 42.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. Donald Com, Director of Electric Services, with me tonight is our board chairman from URAV, Jeff Witt, and one of our board members, John Fleming. We sent out a council action form that basically talks about, this is one of the things that came out of our cost of service study, and when we came in and talked about rate changes and things like that, one of the things council had asked us to do, or asked URAV to do, is look at the, what we call the value of solar, or how do you encourage retail solar programs? We gave you a council action form, and we actually have set up for a presentation tonight too. In the essence of time, if the council action form answers most, if not all of your questions, we can dispense with the presentation so that we know it's already late, but we wanna make ourselves available to answer any questions, or if you would prefer to see the slide presentation, it's about 10 slides. What is council's desire?
Well, I would suggest that maybe if you could just highlight some of the points on the slideshow if you could, not have to go into it, you know, in detail. I think it's, there are people that do, you know, watch, or you know, watch a tape delay, so I think if you just highlight, highlight the points, Jeff, and, thank you for coming for, thank you, John, for coming also.
Okay. So basically, the old program, we're about maxed out. The old program gave customers a $100 per kilowatt rebate on their installation, and then also paid them for excess energy at a, at a number that was calculated in some manner. So our recommend, we looked at some different options, our recommended program is to change that rebate to a $500 per kilowatt rebate. And then, the energy buyback rate would be tied to our cost to purchase energy off the grid. In the previous method, basically, people that didn't own solar were paying extra to the people that produced extra solar. This makes that even. When it comes down to the, to the utility, the out-of-pocket costs utility are the same either way, this helps the customer who wants to put in solar with his upfront capital costs. They can, they get some money rebate from City of Ames, they get rebates from the federal government upfront some of those costs, makes it more enticing of a project for them. So, the, the, the cost of energy buyback would be about 3.5 cents worth, which is what's now, 6.5 cents now. So, that's really the change. It eliminates the cross paying of, of costs between customers as well, so.
And what URAV has done, so, we've been looking at this over the last year, we talked to our cost of service consultant, we also did a workshop, a public workshop, where we went through various options. In fact, the meeting minutes were attached to the council action form, and they talked about several different things. There may be one comment that John wanted to make regarding part of that.
Yeah, to, the current customers will be grandfathered in to the old rate as well, so any current solar owners will still get their, their same rate that they did when they initially put their solar system in. And the second one that came from the feedback was, a lot of people are having a hard time getting a solar installer to come to Ames to install solar because of the administrative burden that Ames has compared to a lot of the surrounding areas. And so, part of the recommendation from URAV was to look at the administrative burden that is put in for putting in a solar system, a home solar system at Ames.
So what we're recommending tonight is not, we don't have the language spelled out that would go with this new thing, but we're asking council to at least support, adopt the new process, and then direct staff to work with the city attorney to then draft the proper language. We would still go through three readings and get that then adopted into the municipal code.
Can you, before you open up for questions, can you just comment too, in your slideshow you talked about, how many solar, how do you measure, how many solar panels are actually installed, and is that an unlimited number that can be installed, and are we going to, I think it says it, it's actually capped, are you gonna change it? Can you talk about that just for a second?
So, when we first started the program, we capped the program at 2,000 kilowatts, okay? And the idea was several, you know, you don't wanna see a rapid outgrowth and then find out that you have things that you need to change in your program. So we've currently got 1,000, about 1,658 kilowatts installed, and the program today is capped at 2,000. So one of the pieces in there is, no matter which way council decides to go, if they wanna stay with the existing program, or if we wanna move to a new program, that's one of the pieces that we need to fix and bump that new cap up.
We're recommending up to 4,000, still doubling the cap right now.
Questions?
So, I think too, could you explain, and first of all, this is really, really impressive work, and we could really spend an hour doing a deep dive on this because it's really important to the community and our climate action plan. So I apologize, I feel like the lateness of the hour, we're not giving this the level of attention it really deserves, and we appreciate your work on this. I have, I think, two questions. So, could you explain a little more where that 4,000 kilowatt hour cap comes from? That, I think we need to understand that.
So, today, our peak load sits at about 138 megawatts, okay? When we first created the program, the idea or the intent is, so there, with any of these programs, there are costs that come with it, whether we're giving a rebate, whether we're, we're buying energy, and we wanted to at least have our arms around how much our budget would include. So to go from two, we point out in the council action form, to move from 2 megawatts to 4 megawatts, for example, that's a 2-megawatt change. That's a two-megawatt change. If council approves the rebate at $500 a kilowatt. That's 2,000 kilowatts, that would be a million dollars in one year that we would pay out in rebates. Our budget does not accomplish that. So we're trying to set a reasonable number so that. Once we reach that cap, we can reevaluate, how is the program working, maybe tweak it? And then also spread that out over multiple year budgets. So that's part of the intent is, is having no cap whatsoever. It's not good fiscal responsibility to be able to look at how our budget then corresponds to that. But we envision as we continue, that number will continue to increase as.
And that's really, that's extremely helpful that this was not an arbitrary number, that there were limiting factors that. Created sort of a reasonable ceiling at this time and then we can come back and reassess things. So super helpful. And then I meant to do a little bit of searching on this. Is there such a thing as best practices in this area for peer communities?
For, for solar, for this type of thing?
Yes.
I would say that this, this rebate approach is probably unusual compared to other people we've talked to.
It's unusual, you said?
Unusual.
How so?
Most people don't do that kind of, a lion doesn't do a rebate at all. But a lot, one of the things we heard from the, from the public was alliance a better deal. Alliance a better deal because their rates are 80% higher than Ames. So you're making money, a lot of money from your solar system because you're not paying the rates and they also buy the power back, the excess power at that same rate. So it's just a different approach.
And they're governed by the utility board, which has made that a requirement, which may not make that a requirement in the future. So their, their net metering might change very quickly, potentially.
And, and I don't want to retread the ground you guys have done, but just on our side, from a due diligence perspective. You, is it, is it fair to say that you looked at peer communities who had sustainability goals? And you looked at the way in which, again, it's, it's hard because if they were served by a lion or someone similar, it, it sort of distorts the comparison. But are there other municipal utilities that had these kind of programs and is ours commensurate with those?
So there are other cities that do have some retail solar. However, I'm thinking of other municipal electric utilities here in the state. Those that are typically not under council control. Have not gone the same route with climate action plans. So the utility is not thinking the same way as Ames. So it's hard to do a comparison. As Jeff pointed out, our program is unique in that we put more money into the rebate than most. Some don't give any rebate at all. And the intentions there were. Listening to our customers specifically that said, you know, if I have to go out and borrow $20,000 to put this in, that's, that's hard. What can you do to help? And we've got money in the demand side management program that offers rebates and that's where we're bringing that money in. And that allows customers then to look at it and shorten their, their. Their payoff period, if you will, because they're getting some money upfront. And as we looked at it, that $500 was kind of that sweet spot. That actually encouraged people that would want to put more solar in. And they're less concerned because the rebate is paid on the entire.
Right.
System, whereas the buyback is just paid on the excess energy that's being produced. So it's a.
And I want to be clear, I, I always want to ask the question, how, what are peer communities doing? It's just, I feel like that's part of our due diligence. But I also love the fact when Ames does something unique and I love the idea that maybe. Your diligence and hard work can serve as a model for other communities. So I love everything about it when Ames can lead the way in particular areas. Final question, you, you did this work, I'm, I'm assuming over the last several months. But holy cow, things have changed. I don't know if you noticed this in the newspaper. So we're in a very different environment. Federal government's taking a very different posture with respect to supports for solar. And so does that, does that, should that change the way we approach this? Or should we say, you know what, there's going to be ups and downs, administrations will change, we should just proceed? Could you just speak to the policy changes that have happened in Washington and would, would that affect what we're doing at all?
So when, when we were looking at the different options, we included what the federal rebate was, trying to calculate. When is a customer going to get a return on his investment?
Right.
And, and it makes a big difference.
Yes.
But we can't control that. We still think, given your climate action plan goals, that this is the right thing for Ames. You can't say what the government, federal government is going to do at this point. That may go away, which is going to hurt solar and maybe we're not going to have the interest that we had before because.
But I think that's the logical next step. So, and I want to hear your thoughts, John. My hope is that six months down the road, at some point where you think it's reasonable, you should come back and we should revisit the utilization. And maybe there would need to be some adjustments made on this based upon how it's actually being utilized. I, I would think we'd be very open to hearing more as the utilization is on. Johnny, do you have something?
I think, I think moving to this model helps the current environment as well. Most of the, most of the community members we talked to that own solar systems that came to the public forum have, have smaller units. A lot of, where the tree city, so there's not a ton of rooftop solar available across the city. And so even if you do have rooftop space, you don't have enough to significantly overproduce. You're, you're usually only covering what you're using. And so allowing this upfront cost is going to help if the federal government and the state government has already reeled back. Their upfront rebate or tax rebates as well. So I think, I think this helps the current situation, if, if anything.
Yep. Thank you for all those comments.
Other questions?
Just one quick one. So in looking at some of the notes, it did, again, this idea that it was difficult. Working with Ames to increase solar, what did you learn and how are you tweaking, how you interact with homeowners? Around that issue of making it easier for them to put in solar, other than the rebates, which is great.
So we addressed the things that were in the control of electric services. There are zoning requirements, there are other requirements that are more onerous in Ames than other places. That's really, you know, we comment on that in our, our documents, but we, that's not our purvey to comment on that. That's something that needs to be talked about in the code, electric codes, different codes that trigger things that they have to do.
Okay.
Whether that can be changed or not, that's not really our role.
Right, okay.
Was that, was that summarized? I mean, I have the same question. Was that summarized somewhere that could come back to council for consideration in terms of?
Yeah. And, and I'll go back and I can resend it to council, but there was a letter of, and again, we've been working on this for about a year, actually. So there were comments that came back that talked about, okay, what's in the, what's in the purview? And this is something that URAV thought long and hard on. What can URAV fix and change and do and what can't they do? And some of the things just fell outside of that. We can, I'll, I'll send that letter back out again that went out to.
And if, if council's interested in that, that might be under council comments, you want to ask for, or actually, if I do now, if you want to have a memo. Just not, just summarizing what those are. So if they want to take it up.
Right.
Beyond URAV.
Right.
That would then allow something more specific that could go to staff for investigation versus just. It's just so difficult to work with Ames and they can't articulate what it is. If it's very specific, that's helpful for us, at least.
I believe, I think the, the comments from the public hearing, I think some of that is in that document.
I just know there was a, if you had tracked that or could it help us identify, okay, so.
Okay.
Is there an interest on the council to get just a copy of that list?
I, I would make that, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Move that we receive a copy of that list of what those barriers are that are outside of. URAV's responsibility that council might consider.
Second.
Move to second. All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. All right, we'll open up public comment. Is there anyone who wants to address counsel on this topic if our motion is made? Closed public input. Is there a motion on resolution approving changes to existing retail renewable energy buyback program and directing staff? The city legal department to develop changes in this code, chapter 28.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Beatty Hanson.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Dunk.
Aye.
Bettrick.
Aye.
Jeff and John, thank you for your service and thank you for enduring a very long meeting, but also. You, you guys are on a pretty technical, I know you have to work with Don, first of all. Just kidding. But no, just the fact is, so many communities, so many committees and boards exist and do a great job. And thank you for your service, appreciate your help and your expertise you bring to the table.
Thank you.
So, right. All right, move on. Item number 43, staff report on special penalty enforcement area fines. Chief Huff.
Good evening. You get me for the next three items. So the first one is looking at the special penalty enforcement area fines. Back in 2019, the council enacted the enhanced penalties for game day parking, which has been expanded to. Possibly include other events. At that time, a typical ticket for that area for illegal parking would have been $20. We increased that to 40 and the intent there is to cut down on legal parking in the area around the stadium. In that special event area to allow for emergency vehicles to be able to get through. And also in response to a lot of complaints from the residents that live in that area. So we've been looking at this, we've had this in place for a few years. And so what I can tell you in, in 2022, we wrote 879 of those tickets. Increased to 1239 and 23 and about 1,100 last year. And a little bit of this revolves around the, the schedule of the football games. So it varies a little bit based on that. When, when the Iowa, Iowa State game is in Ames, we, we probably write a few more. But at this point, we're averaging around 200 of those special penalty tickets per game. Some are higher, some are lower. We think that we're sort of losing that deterrent effect of that higher fine. And part of that is because the private lots are beginning to charge more for parking. We've seen some as high as $25. I would not be surprised if that doesn't increase again or over time. And so there's not that differential between the penalty and parking legally. And if you park illegally, might cost you a little bit more for the ticket, but you get to park a lot closer to the stadium. And so we're starting to see that. We also looked at repeat offenders just to see if there was a lot of people that were getting those tickets. And what we found is that's not really the case. We found 52 vehicles in that three-year period had more than one citation. So that only accounted for 193 total citations in that time period and that's only 6% of the total. So it, it doesn't appear to be repeat offenders are really the problem. It's kind of different people. So we're looking at a possible change in that fine, increasing it to increase the deterrent effect of it as well. We're going to see SciTown supposedly get done in 2027. That will probably increase events in that area, increase the potential for congestion. And I'm sure the neighbors are not going to be very happy either if there's a lot of illegal parking. So to address that, we are proposing a $75 game day fine or event fine. And it would be $70 if you pay it within seven days. There's always a little bit of a reduction if you pay it quickly. Take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, chief. Questions?
I've struggled on this issue with trying to figure out how we think about right sizing the penalty. Because one approach is let's make it $500. Let's make it a really big hammer. It's like, oh my gosh. So how, could you just give us your thoughts on, on how do we right size what this penalty should be?
Now, we went back and forth a little bit on it. I think we kind of landed on something around twice what we have now. And it's about three times currently what people are paying for some of those private property lots that are $25. Because again, we're trying to encourage people to utilize the legal parking, which there's plenty of in that area. And not utilize parking illegally on the street, disrupting the neighborhoods, making it more difficult for us to get around. So that's kind of how we landed on that 75.
And one question, so someone's coming in for the, for the game. How, and they see, okay, I could park here. How would someone know about other parking options if they're not familiar with the area?
Well, there's a, there's a pretty large campaign each game to explain where parking is available. And keep in mind that if you, if you're parking in one of those areas, you're already parking illegally to begin with. It's alternate side usually is what we're talking about. And all of those signs also have additional signage for that game day. So there is a warning before people park. I firmly believe that a lot of people see that and figure it's still closer to the stadium and it's only maybe $10 more to pay the ticket. But there's, there's a pretty large campaign, not only by the city, but also by Iowa State to explain to folks where they can legally park. And I would say, other than potentially the Iowa game, when parking is probably at a premium. Other than that game, there's plenty of legal parking to utilize.
Okay.
So we put that information out.
Yep, thanks for those answers.
Any questions? All right, declare a public comment to be open. Anyone who wanted to address counsel on this topic tonight? Seeing now I'm a closed public input. Is there a motion?
I'd move alternative one.
Second.
Thank you. Those who had motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Carried. All right, item number 44.
44 is fines for false alarms. So currently, if we get a false alarm. Every business gets the first three free and then there's a $30 fine after that third false alarm. So these are false alarms, just to be clear. If we respond to an alarm where there was a attempted break-in or a break-in, those don't count. These are just times when that alarm goes off for, for no good reason. It appears to us that that $30 fine is really not sufficient deterrent to getting these businesses to make sure that they're. Keeping those alarm systems in repair. And so the problem with false alarms is, one, it takes an officer response and usually it's two officers that respond to alarm. Because we respond as if this is real. And so that's a lot of our time and we're just estimating the officer time. If it only takes them that 30 minutes, is about $45 of, of time that it takes. That doesn't include the time that the dispatcher's on the phone, trying to locate a key holder and all of those things. And it doesn't also include the time on the backside for us to impose the fine and track all that stuff. So it's, that's, that $45 is just the two officers responding if it only takes a half hour. Obviously, a lot of false alarms can put officer in a, in a bad mindset that all alarms are false. And so they're not maybe being as careful as they should be. There's a liability when we respond, depending on the type of alarm. If it's a robbery type alarm. Our response is going to look different than a burglary alarm. And so there's also liability and as we're traveling to that alarm. And it also takes away from the other duties that we have. If we're responding to a false alarm, that's time that we could have been spent doing other things. So in 2023, we answered 585 alarms. Most of those were false alarms. In 2024, it was 626. And through April of this year, it's already been 177. And again, the vast majority of these are false alarms. We have a lot of repeat customers when it comes to the false alarms. And so you can see in the document where we had multiple businesses that have had multiple alarms over and over and over again. We actually have one business right now that has eight, 18 outstanding alarm fines that they haven't paid us for $540. That's a problem as well. Some other communities have already addressed this. We believe that a graduated system is the right way to go where, again, we, we feel like the first three are free. That makes sense. Sometimes a new business, new alarm, it takes a little. sense. Sometimes a new business, new alarm, it takes a little bit to get the bugs out of it. But after that, we would recommend a $50 charge for the fourth alarm, 100 for the fifth, 200 for the sixth.
Is this annual, like first three in a year, pre?
First three free period, like we do now.
Ah.
So I don't, I'm not recommending any kind of reset. Just because you, if, once you've gotten those three free, we, we really do hope that you get the alarm figured out. And again, we don't charge anything for a real alarm. So if we show up and there's signs that somebody tried to get in, we're not charging them. If we get called off before we respond, which does happen occasionally too, where the alarm goes off, the alarm company gets a hold of the key holder, the key holder calls us and says, don't, you don't need to go, don't worry about it. We don't charge for those either.
I see.
So it's just the ones where we actually respond to them.
Okay.
But, but to Brahma's point, let's say those, those false alarms happened three years ago, five years ago. I mean, maybe, what if the property's changed owners?
Well, if it's changed owners, then I think it would reset.
So it resets then.
Different, yeah.
But I think the broader point, these other communities, they have some kind of resets over periods of time. I'm just a little bit nervous. At some point, the sins of the past continue to haunt these people. You just have a single owner owning the property for 20 years.
That would be true. You, you could, you could impose some kind of reset. It's just a little bit harder for us to track. We'd have to reset everybody at like a calendar year or fiscal year. I'm not sure that that accomplishes our goal of cutting down on the false alarms.
It seems like maybe you try it and three years, you collect some data on what, I mean, I just, yeah, I don't know that you need to put a limit on it now, but wait and see.
It looks like the only community that's actually putting a reset in of the, the ones that we've got of the four, it's Urbendale, and they have much higher fines.
Yeah.
And only the first free right after that versus three free.
Yeah.
You know, it is troubling to me that, that you have someone who has $540 of fines. That, is that right? $30 times?
It's eight, yeah, 18 unpaid.
So this is way, Steve, you can hit me if you want to. It's 9:30. But that'd be assault, by the way. Could you notice, could you notice, I said, look, we're not going to respond anymore to your, to your alarms?
Yeah, we haven't really gone down that route because if it were real.
See, I told you. It's 9:30, no good, no.
That's our, we'll, we'll strike it from the video. Someone will see it.
Jeremy, you got that? All right, scrub that. It's one of those little things you see in the VCR tape we're playing.
And this isn't related to fire, right? These are just.
No, these are burglary or holdup alarms.
Oh.
A holdup alarm would be like a robbery, where there's a, actually somebody there.
So that would be a good example, just out of curiosity. So we've had that happen at work. We have those buttons on it.
Are you the ones with the 18?
We have some buttons that you can push if you need to.
Yeah.
And it has happened where they, they periodically will go off accidentally. Now, I don't think we've had more than three of it. But I could see where, you know, the batteries wear out in a device, something glitches. So anyway, I, I'm with Amber, though. I think we can try this out. And then maybe if you, if you think that is more heavy handed, then we need to maybe, maybe we could look at some sort of reset.
All right, we're going to open a public comment on this one. They'll address counsel on this.
Crazy. Don't do the reset, try it without the reset?
I'd say try it without the reset.
Well, I, we're in public comment.
Ooh.
9:30.
Hey, we still got a lot to go. All right, closed public input. All right, now, go ahead. Comment, comment or motion?
I'll move alternative one.
Second.
All right. Those who have motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, thank you. Sorry for being punchy. All right.
Mayor, on a related note, is it possible for us to be regrouping those fines in some alternative way if we've got the frequent offenders?
We're actually working on that to see if there's a, a way to make that collection. So we're working on it.
Seems to be an incredible abuse of the system, essentially.
I think we'll get there.
All right. But you'll still respond?
We will still respond.
All right. I am 45. Pet licensing program.
Pet licensing program. Okay. So we, we brought this up at our budget hearing, where we kind of proposed that idea of pet licensing program, because many other communities across the state and across the nation do have these programs. So out of the top 15 cities in Iowa by population, only two don't have a pet licensing program, and we happen to be one of them. So most cities that have a pet licensing program also do not provide the high level of animal care, sheltering, and control services that we provide in Ames. So we do a lot more than a lot of the communities that have these PLPs. And so what's the reason? What are the benefits? So a license identifies a dog and a cat and allows the owner to quickly be reunited. That's one of the things that we're very interested in is hopefully less time in the shelter and back with the owners where we can. And we can trace those 24 hours a day by, by the police department. They've got the software already to do this, just so you know. There is some setup fees and there is a, a yearly fee for the program, but those would be covered by the pet licensing program itself. Licensed pets are actually held, and this sounds wrong, but I'm going to say it, held longer before they're adopted out. And that's because they're held longer to get back to their actual owners. So that's actually a good thing. I don't know that we'll see that problem here, because we're also proposing that a free microchip and lifetime registration can be included with each license. So that will really help us get pets back. If they're microchipped, it, it doesn't take much time at all, even if they don't have their tags on them, you know, their license tag. The pet license program also helps us ensure that our dogs and cats are vaccinated properly. I know you know that we've had some really terrible outbreaks at the current shelter, especially with some cat diseases that are just devastating. And so hopefully this would help with that as well. And it also ensures that they are vaccinated against rabies, which can potentially be harmful to our humans as well. So we, we like that. And lastly, license fees will help support the animal shelter and control services by maintaining those high level standards as we move into a larger facility with higher operating costs. So that's, that's a real thing. We've got some estimates in here. It's hard to actually say just how much we'll bring in on a pet licensing program, because we're not looking to go door to door knock and say, hey, do you have a dog or a cat? We need to license. That's not how we're going to do this. So we're going to rely on honest people to license their pets through this program. If we happen to come across an animal that isn't licensed, then that'll be a part of getting that pet back, is making sure that they get that license taken care of. So we have landed on a proposed fee of $12 per year for altered dogs and cats, meaning they've been fixed, spayed, neutered, or twice as much, $24 for unaltered cats and dogs. And we're also not really proposing a fine. Some communities have a fine if they pick up a dog and it's not licensed. We're not proposing a fine right now. I don't, I don't think we need to start there for non-compliance. I think, I actually do think people will do this.
How about non-cat or dog pets?
Not proposing anything because we don't have, I don't think we have enough of them in Ames to really justify that expense. We spend most of our time on dog and cat issues. And housing them is much more expensive than your snakes and gerbils and all the other stuff. We do run into them, but I don't think at a rate that justifies a license fee for them. And I, I'm not seeing other communities that are doing that either. Mostly, it's just dogs and cats.
Sure. Do you have any idea what the compliance, compliance rate is in other communities?
I do not.
I'm just curious, like, if, you know, we've got whatever, an estimation of 16,000 sun dogs and 11,000 cats. If other communities know how many animals they have and how many licenses they have.
We can, we can check into that.
I'm just curious. My other question is, would this be an online thing?
Yeah. So you would, you could go to the shelter or you could apply online. All the information, we would get that. And then you would be mailed the tag.
Right.
And the tag would, you would keep that, but you would just have to renew it every year.
Yep.
So the, the good thing is we have the software in place. So we don't have to buy software. We just, the initial setup is estimated about $10,000 just for the initial setup of the system that we have. And then it's, I think, it was around $2,800 a year after that, which could easily be covered through the licensing program itself.
Now, Tim, you always ask about best practices. I think Jeff said a good, you see that, that list of the cities, it's, I was amazed at how many cities from the state of Iowa have this. But I want to give you a bit of advice. This is the one I'm a little bit concerned about. This can be very sensitive of a lot of people. So we have to introduce this with a lot of upfront information, right? And maybe we can call some of these other cities and learn from them how they implemented it. Because there's going to be a lot of pushback on this. And we have to do this right. Okay. So I don't think I want to do this tomorrow. We could probably draw up the, the, the actual code, but let us learn from some, some of the other cities. Susan, of course, will help. Will put a lot of advanced information on this. I think somebody was saying they had a little blowback with Johnston, the, was it you telling me? Urbendale? Yeah. And Urbendale actually had it in place a couple of years, right? But people, I don't know if they finally found out, they weren't paying attention.
A bit of a cesspool.
Yeah. So we want to try to do it right, at least put the information out to them. So I'm not sure we'll implement this tomorrow. But, but I think it's something we should do. And boy, look at all the other cities, large and small, just in the state of Iowa, who does this. And then all the money will go back to the shelter. So it'll help for the operations or taking care of the animals while they're with us. So I think it's a good thing for us. It'll also help reduce general property tax support for the, for the shelter, which is good, too.
Yeah. And I think the timing, obviously, as we look at getting into a new shelter that will be larger, may require more staff, I think it's a good time to implement a program like this to, to help us really make sure that we get this right as we move into this new shelter.
Chief, I, I'm supportive of, of this. And I'm always nervous about when cities add just fees for the sake of adding fees. So I'm, I'm going to be looking for, is there a cost benefit? And in your oral comments, the report, you've done a nice job of explaining that this isn't just for raising revenues.
No.
There, there's a cost benefit for the animals and for the owners. My, my question's sort of narrow. Ames has a lot of people that come here on a temporary basis. So they may have a position here for a year with Iowa State. They bring their dog. Is it contemplated that people that are going to be here for a short stay would be complying with this? And how, how do we think about people that are here just for a short period of time?
Well, I don't think I'm aware of any community that has like a prorated, like I'm going to be in town for six months, so it's like half or something. I haven't had that question come up yet, so it's a good one. I don't probably have a good answer for you on how, I think people would probably comply, even if they were going to be here only a year or less. But I can't say for sure how they might look at that.
Okay, thanks.
And one thing I did fail to mention that's really important, another piece of this, is we have problems from time to time with hoarding cases. So people that have way too many pets that they can't really care for very well. And so a pet licensing program also helps in that situation, that, you know, if you can't afford $12 a year for that animal, then maybe you shouldn't have 20 cats or 30 cats. And we're running into that problem more and more. And so I think this helps a little bit with that problem. And it's one of the reasons that we get these terrible diseases that run through the shelter when we do encounter these cases and pick them up. And then it gets very expensive, very fast for the care of those animals.
Do you think the hoarders are actually going to comply with this?
Maybe not, but it will give us a, a chance to more easily get those animals out of their care and into a proper setting.
It reminds me of the drug tax stamp that we, we, we make our people who have illegal drugs get a drugs tax, which is absolutely backwards and asinine. I, I came up one of those houses once where, I don't know if you remember this, this is probably seven or eight years ago. I was out door knocking and it was a house that had terrible hoarding problem with cats. It was unbelievably disgusting. So I completely support our efforts, but I just, I don't want to presuppose that someone who's hoarding is going to say, well, I guess I gotta get all these licensed. I don't think that's going to happen.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think it just helps us on the backend.
Yeah.
All right, open a public input. Is anyone on rest counsel on this topic? Seeing, hearing none. Close public comment. Entertaining motion?
Move alternative one.
Second.
Those who have motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right, move on. I number 46, staff report on state law changes to ADU zoning standards.
So city, so with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance we adopted a couple of years back, we have some standards that are now going to be in conflict with new state law. I give you a table in the staff report of the, at least the minimum things that we need to update to meet state law. In the options I've given you, I think the main question is, we created our ADU standards based on some assumptions about lot size, unit size, height controls, and probably an occupancy expectation of an owner within one of those units. We can no longer require ownership as a component of one of the occupancy requirements. So the main question is, do you have any interest in reducing some of the encroachment allowances we have in a rear yard, primarily the three foot setback, or any of the other provisions that are intended to facilitate accessory detached buildings? If you do not, we'll move ahead with the table to bring those standards in line with the state code. There's probably a couple of other things we'll have to tweak beyond that. But we just need direction if you want to tweak anything beyond the minimum standards. We'll probably also have to edit the rental code in relation to this. Also, we didn't go through that yet with, with inspections.
Kelly, I, I looked this over and it, it looks, this is very technical, and I'm trying to wrap my brain around what the implications of all this are. It's hard for me to understand that we have the pieces that we need in order to respond in a thoughtful way to this tonight. Could you just give us a little sense? I mean, and this is so new, we never had a chance to really try this out. Sounds familiar. Can you give us just some sense of the implications of these, these changes?
So when we adopted our standards, we have yet to permit one in the city. Just for a little context, even though we had, a number of people said they were excited about it, no one actually went through the process. We haven't approved any. I think, again, we can no longer require parking. It's just off the table. You can't restrict the size below 1,000 square feet. You can't require an owner occupied structure. And then there's a couple of, in a sense, in essence, you have to treat the accessory building the same as a house, which, which is fine. We, we generally were. We actually allow for encroachments and exceptions to the benefit of accessory buildings to promote them in the rear yard. And that's kind of the question. If you no longer can control parking, you can no longer control occupancy, do you really want to incent those structures that could be bigger and taller than what we had before? I think the other one that, that is really interesting for us is we only allow detached structures. We did not allow attached. The state law allows you to do in addition to your home as the accessory dwelling unit or to build it detached. So that's again, something that we hadn't contemplated. That doesn't really affect the encroachment allowances, because it's just going to be in addition to a house who have to meet the normal house standards. But that's also an interesting element here that we're, we're not 100% sure how that works. You can see in my notes, we don't think you can convert a house to two units, but that's unclear. If you can just have to do an addition, or can you carve up a house into two units and say you have an ADU in a single family home? That's not very clear.
So that's a big deal for us. And I, and I apologize, I did not track with that. And so that could have pretty significant impacts in some of our neighbors, neighborhoods that we're, we have some concerns. So.
And I don't know, we can't really necessarily do anything about it either, unfortunately. I think that was probably my number one concern is how are we controlling the investor properties that were taking out some of the affordable housing that we had and making them into multiple units? We just won't be able to control that directly.
Well, I think too, there's the risk of the game of whack a mole that you always, that you always think about, too. Like if we, say we do change, you know, the, the setback encroachments to make it less permit, it could be that next year we're looking at the state being like, oh, and you can't do that.
The difference is, we're not being more restrictive. The, the point of the law is you can't be more restrictive than a house. We currently are more per- We currently are more permissive for ADUs than we have to be. So that's the only real question, is do you want to continue to be more permissive? Or do you just want to default to how you must treat them as a single-family home?
Although, like you said, we haven't had any.
We've had zero.
So it might be that even with these changes, people aren't.
And just a reminder, when we did this, there's a study, the state law does not overrule covenants. So almost 50% of, of properties in the city have a covenant that restricts an ADU. So again, you're talking about properties that are at least 30 to 40 years old before this is even an option. So again, it's your, your core neighborhoods everywhere else that we've always been concerned about. But we're not going to be able to do a whole lot about that.
So Kelly, when it says that the maximum height is no different than single-family home maximums, is that the height of the single-family home that's on the property? Or just in general, by code, how tall single-family homes can be?
I believe it means whatever you allow for the height of a principal structure, regardless of its height, you must allow the ADU to be as tall as a single-family home. So if you have a one-story home in the front, you're no longer restricted to having a one-story accessory building. You could build a two-story accessory building.
Other questions?
Okay, let me phrase the question this way. Help us understand the differences, differences between the options that you've given us. So.
Option one would basically remove the allowances that are more permissive than we have to be. Option two would be, be permissive and just make the state law changes only, which means it may or may not be able to facilitate ADUs, or it'll just depend.
So you say that, and I'm still struggling. I apologize. So.
I think the easiest thing to think about is, we allow a setback of three feet.
Right.
For a two-story accessory building now.
Right.
That's probably the number one thing that you can change, that you're allowed to change, is to no longer allow a reduced rear yard setback for ADUs.
So does option one or option two encourage more ADUs?
Option two.
Option, so option two is going to be?
Most permissive. Most permissive options available.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the thing that concerns me maybe the most of all these things is that we can't require that the primary residents be owner occupied.
Either residents. Either the primary nor the secondary.
But we have made the requirement that the primary be, haven't we?
No.
Either, just one of the two had to be owner occupied.
At any rate, we wouldn't necessarily have an owner occupying.
That's correct.
And that, to me, is very problematic. And so I, I would be in favor of, of not being as permissive as we are now, simply because I am concerned about that aspect. And also about the, the size of these ADUs, maybe taking over more space.
Well, you're absolutely correct. This, these changes are going to impact diversity of communities differently than other communities. There's no question about that.
All right. Is there a motion gives them direction to staff?
I'd like to move option two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
So could you walk us through the process? So if we go forward with option two, what happens next? And will there be opportunities for the community to have input? Because it's just us tonight.
Yeah, so you're just going to, you're just setting the framework for what we're going to write. We have to go through a number of steps. We probably have to go to the historic preservation commission. We definitely have to go to the P and Z, and then we'll be back with a draft ordinance. If you're not making any other changes. I, I laid out a, a very accelerated schedule. I don't know if we can actually get this to you and have this adopted by June 24th. It kind of depends after we look at it with legal, everything that has to go into it. But we do not propose outreach. I mean, you already allow ADUs. You're not principally changing that. State law is making you allow them, so public input's probably not the, the most significant thing here, since we already allow for them. But they'll have opportunities at hearings to, to articulate any other concerns they might have. So again, we get here, back to you with that draft ordinance. You don't like something, you can delete it or edit it or, or change it.
It seems like we've, we've gone this far and, and had very robust discussion. I think the support was unanimous, if I remember right, for ADUs. I may be wrong on that.
By council?
Yeah.
I believe it was. I think ultimately the.
My recollection was, this was unanimous. And so I would be supportive of option two, but only because I think that, given the work that we've done on this, it deserves further, further fleshing out. I don't know where I'll be eventually on it, but I think we've gone this far. We should have some further conversations.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm not, not behind option two. I'm more in favor of option one, because I, I really don't want to be more permissive if we have to allow non-owner occupied properties.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I support option two. I, I think that it's really hard when we really haven't had any interest to see what the implications are either way. So honestly, I could go with either one or two and reevaluate this at a later date. I'm not, I think it's really tough to make a decision.
Yeah, I think since we haven't had any interest. It seems pretty low risk. That's what I thought that is.
I think the big, the big thing that really, when this was going through, and we were talking about it, is just that both can be rental. And I'm just concerned about, in the near campus neighborhoods, that you could claim that an ADU is built on the back, and you have something that's within three feet of the backyard, or the, the rear property line. You have to approve it. And there's also no limitation on bedroom quantity. So if you can get three bedrooms into 1,000 square foot with a.
I think we're.
You can't stop.
Well, we're, we're, we're hoping that we can maintain the one-bedroom limitation.
Well, I'm saying, option two.
Right.
Says, go ahead and go with.
No, no, it says only make changes. If we already have, if we already have a one-bedroom limit, that would stay. It wouldn't go away with option two.
Yeah, but we don't.
Is that, I, I miss, misread it. Is that, is that accurate?
I, I hope to not have to change the one-bedroom limitation.
All right. Good clarification. Thank you.
It is not addressed in the law, so it'll be up to, to legal and planning to walk through what we think it says. We had some correspondence during the drafting of the bill that seemed to say that maybe that was okay, so I'm, I'm hoping that is true.
Okay.
But we aren't really sure.
We are not.
And therefore, we may be opening ourselves up.
And this is a strange, a strange matter. We're voting on something that none of us really understand. So is it worthwhile to have a further conversation?
I mean, we can, no matter what, July 1st, that table goes into effect. So if we take longer to discuss it, that's fine. We just have to administer state law without any clarity on how we're going to do it locally. We're just forced into this with five weeks to decide if we want to do anything more specific than what the state law wants. You can always change it afterwards also.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Option two, move second. Those who pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Tim and Robin, those opposed?
Nay.
Motion failed.
I'd move alternative one, option one.
Second.
Which is to eliminate the rear setback allowance specifically.
Yes.
All right, move in seconded. Those who pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Anything else you need from us, Kelly?
No. So do we, do we have any guidance for staff on this when this comes back? Are there things, I mean, now's the time to give direction if there are things prominent. If you, you want to flesh out on this, this is the time to get direction. I, I'm still really confused on this candidly.
Right, the rest of the change is the state mandated. We still have to do. So the owner, the owner occupancy is gone, size requirement's gone, like all of that, there's no.
Parking's gone.
Parking's gone.
Right.
So I, I intend to only make the changes I must, plus eliminate the three-foot setback allowance in the rear yard. So we will treat it as a house for rear yard setback purposes. That's the only other change I'm going to make.
There's still be none.
Right.
Not the one-bedroom?
That's not a change. That's current code. So I, I hope to keep that. Yeah.
All right. I am 47.
All right, so this is a staff report. We've had a couple of different discussions over the last year and a half about housing. Specifically, you had a letter last winter from the ADC Short Term Housing Task Force with a number of, of ideas that, that you took on. You've addressed two of those in terms of a tax abatement incentive and looking at the conservation ordinance. And then the last issue was, in relation to Plan 2040 in the growth areas, how do you look at pioneer infrastructure and oversizing of infrastructure and the cost burden to a builder or developer versus maybe a city share for that? Since that time, we've had a number of developers approach city staff asking how they can move their projects ahead with some element of, of city assistance for that financially. And that led to the list of projects you see up here on the screen. Part of this is related to Greenbrier, who's in the annexation process. And they're looking through initiation of the annexation. We typically do a pre-annexation agreement to kind of carve out what infrastructure is, is whose responsibility. And so you can see in this presentation, they're also part of this. And we haven't been able to formulate a development agreement for Greenbrier, and I'll come back to that at the end. So importantly, in this, we thought it was valuable to the council to try to compile as much as we could about all of the requests. This slide presentation is, is not necessarily a buildable land use plan for any of these properties, but it gives you some idea of the core infrastructure that's requested or needed for eventual build-out of this. So then we've gone through and looked at kind of their land use plans, looked at the approved zoning for these sites, and had conversations with many of these developers about what they're looking for. And then ultimately, that turned into the slides at the end that look at the financial cost of each project. So I'm happy to go through some of the assumptions on each, each of the projects. But ultimately, at the end of the table, you're looking at financial assistance if it was a city obligation for each of these projects. Now, I don't, at, at times, it's been indicated that it is all or nothing, meaning we need all of this assistance or we can't proceed. Maybe there's phasing that could be done at a lower financial amount. Tonight, we're really looking to get a sense from the council, the reaction to the requests. It's substantial. We're saying it's at least $10 million if you were to grant all of the requests, which is, which is kind of beyond scope of anything we've done as a city in any budget cycle, even over multiple years. And then as you're starting to think about this, are there, are there priorities for things, if you do grant incentives, that you want to see accomplished? Is it, is it really about pioneer infrastructure that can serve as many projects as possible? Is it about oversizing that helps a specific project move ahead and remove a financial obstacle? Is there priorities for use of different types of funds? That's probably not something that needs to be decided tonight. I think understanding kind of the overall financial picture is our goal. I think staff believes, because of a need for housing, thinking about what can be done in the next three years is, is a lens that you could apply to this. We're not going to build out 700 housing units in three years. In total, we have over 1,400 or 1,500 housing units represented with these projects, especially in the north. So how do you, how do you tackle that when you're talking about really at least a 10-year growth plan and a budget ask of over $10 million in terms of all of the, all of the financial incentives? And then there's a little bit of a complicating factor here in that not only are you seeing these estimates, which have not been reviewed by anyone, these are the best guess that we have today. There's also some development, developers are asking for potentially TIF in addition to this. So that's a trade-off of taking away the tax abatement program that you have, and then applying TIF so a developer can get the financial rebate directly rather than a home buyer benefiting from a reduced tax rate. We do not have the TIF amounts in here. We don't know exactly what those asks are at this point, but potentially that could also be an element of any discussion that goes forward here. I will note, a couple of these projects have said they haven't finalized. Well, most of them haven't finalized their land use plan. Some have prior approved plans where they would ask for increased density to also increase the number of units on the projects. That would also be something that they would have to go through a rezoning process and a development agreement amendment process to address. So that is a very high-level overview. I'm happy to go through the specifics. If any of these improvements, you need to understand what they're about. I'm happy to do that. I can go through the, the site diagrams as well.
I know you're, you're looking for direction, or what's, is that the right word?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to scare you. You've seen it for the first time, so I don't think you need.
I think the magnitude of this conversation and the complexity and the unknowns is a very difficult conversation to have at 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we're going to have to come back and look at it and see if we have some recommendations for you to deal with. And then we've got to bring Corey Goodnow in and, and see what the impact's going to be on water, sewer, and electric and those kind of things. But we certainly wanted you to see it, because we've got a lot of people want to build homes. And do you want to pay for all of it? These are benefits we haven't given before. You're going to pick one or two that you think can move faster and will create the housing you want? Those are the type of things we'll have to show you. And then is there an overall policy on oversizing or something like that you want to adopt? So I think we just want to show it to you. I think the urgency was that perhaps, Greenbrier, is it called? Greenbrier was going to annex, and we don't want to slow down that annexation. But we probably won't have a developers' agreement, because we won't have this all sived out by then. We could still deal with that at time of rezoning, so we don't want to slow up their annexation at all. So we've got to come back with a little.
Right, and that can proceed.
That's right. We don't want to slow it down.
Yeah.
So we want you to look at this, maybe spend a little more time reading it over, and we'll come back with some thoughts, too. Maybe not the final answers, but some thoughts.
I think it would be good to get some timing, too, on the various.
When they'll be able, when they want to do it? Yeah, we know what the commitment's going to be, when they're going to do it. That's right, what are they going to do, right? Maybe they're going to do all townhouses, and you don't like townhouses anymore. I don't know.
Kelly, let me tell you my Christmas list for this. This is big dollars, and it's new for us. I, what I would love, if it's possible, to help us think as a council about policy standards that we can adopt, that whatever we do is going to be a precedent. So let me give you an example of something I don't love. So developer says, I've got this piece of ground. I want to develop it. And I want X number of bajillion dollars for this project. And there's no benefit, demonstrated benefit to the community. It's just purely throwing money at a project. I don't love that, right? There's another classification of projects where the city contribution would actually make up a delta between a project that is not viable and one that is. Now, I'm much more interested in that, but I have difficulty trying to articulate sort of rational principles that can help the council do this in a way that doesn't feel arbitrary. Because here's what I don't want to do. I'd rather give no one anything to have a sense that we're just doing something on an arbitrary basis. Oh, I like this developer. They're a nice people. We're going to support them. And this developer over here, that's, that's not good governance. So what I would like is some kind of rational principle policy that we can all wrestle with. And maybe I won't even like it, but I'd rather have a policy that I don't like than a policy, than no policy at all. Is that, is that how? I don't know if that's any benefit to you. That's my thought.
Steve, you probably want to comment. I think it's just more complex than that. I, I think, as I said, as represented to us, all of it is a gap. I can't vouch for it.
We can't prove it.
I can't vouch for it, but that is how it's represented in this table. So we can adopt policies to say pioneer is this level of assistance, oversizing is this level assistance. May or may not fill a gap completely for a project. There's a lot of new asks in here about like territory buyouts, things we haven't done before. I, I think the other issue that, that Steve keeps emphasizing is, what's the budget issue in any one year for trying to do this? You, you, they might totally meet your policy. You just may not be able to afford to do that in one year. So a, a, a policy for budgeting is something that you might need to consider in the future as well.
But, and, and, and I, it's okay. If you don't have an answer, that's, that's perfectly okay. But if I've got three competing projects, then how in the world are we going to decide who gets it? Let me, let me give you an, an parallel analogy. We do this facade grant program, and we're using public dollars to achieve a public good. And I'm supportive of that. And we have criteria. So it's not just, okay, there's my friend. He's got his project. And this person I don't like so much, I'm not going to fund that. Good government seeks to have clarity and transparency in decision-making process. So we may not have a sense this is doable tonight, but that's something that I would want to see if we're going to go, if I'm going to be supportive of this.
And I think any direction on what priorities may be helps staff formulate that. I think it's, it's hard for us to formulate a list of priorities when we're not sure. Is it single-family homes? Is it cost per unit? Is it completing an infrastructure gap? Like, there's a lot of things you could write a policy about, but not knowing the. there's a lot of things you could write a policy about, but not knowing the council's particular interests and priorities, which eventually is what we need to learn, whether that's tonight or some other date, that's going to be necessary.
Or we can analyze in all those ways, you know? We could try to come up with all those ways to, to help you make that decision. It'll be difficult to pay for all of it, to the extent they want.
I know that some people have waited for four hours for this to come up on the agenda. I agree that this is a pretty deep topic to try and take this on and have a long, you know, conversation. Is there some specific information the council would like that wasn't presented at a high level that we could ask staff to come back and then put on the agenda at an earlier part in the evening so we can have, you know, a conversation? And it's going to be a long conversation, probably over multiple, you know, meetings versus trying to, and, and it was very clear, talked about this this afternoon, was that staff is not expecting a decision tonight.
Right, right.
But what is missing, if anything, so that when we come back, they have enough that we have some, something to really sink our teeth into?
I just have a, hopefully, a brief question for Kelly. On the tax increment financing, it's the last paragraph from page one, the developers support exempting their developments from the citywide property tax abatement program incentive in order to get TIF. That's confusing to me because it would be just shifting the benefit from the homeowners to developers.
Correct.
Why would we want to do that?
Well, we're not, we're not asking you anything what you like to do. You could question a lot of things, but we're not saying we're going to recommend that or you're going to recommend it. That's just what they have asked for. But they have a whole list of things you might not want to do. That's a good question. I'm just saying you'll have to make that decision on a lot of the benefits they've asked for.
The tax abatement was a request from the development community, so.
That's why I guess.
That would be an interesting, some interesting feedback to hear, I guess.
Well, yeah.
So there are two things that I would want to know, and, and it might be that if, if the developers come up and speak, maybe this will be answered, I don't know. But Kelly, you mentioned that some of the projects were indicated, if we don't get this, we really can't do this project. It's not going to cash flow or, or whatever the, the way of looking at it was. But it's not clear to me whether that's looking at the entirety of the project or individual phases of the project, you know? Like, can you complete phase one, but we really aren't going to be able to do phase two? Or is it, we aren't even going to start phase one because we don't have the totality of this?
Yeah, we can follow up on that question.
The second thing that I'm interested in is just a brief assessment, not tonight, but in the future, of how the things that are being requested are of benefit outside the individual development. So for example, I would say a water buyout is, is pretty exclusive to a development, but maybe completing a section of road or completing a turn lane on a major thruway is going to be of benefit outside the development. And I don't really have a good sense, having read this and looked at the whole thing, of how each of these falls into those categories of benefit to the development only or benefit more broadly.
Yeah, that's a good question. Anything else?
I think I would be interested in per site, I guess. We've seen estimates of some of the densities going up, and so I'm curious about balance of rental versus owner occupied and potential price points. Because I think if we're thinking about providing incentives, we, the city should be receiving a benefit of some level of affordability or some level of, you know, compliance with our climate action plan goals for new construction or something in return.
I'd be curious about cost per unit, too.
You mean investment cost or cost, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just so, and it doesn't have
The amount the city puts in per unit.
Approximately, yeah. The, the city incentive versus how many units are we talking?
Right. And do you care what kind of unit is? I mean, is a apartment complex the same as a detached home? Because they're going to tell us all of a sudden.
Like, that's, kind of, let's, let's, we'll just pick on Greenbrier because there's no actual plan. So we're, so I, I said maybe it's 250 apartments and maybe it's 200 single-family homes, attached, detached. I don't know that. So if this, what Steve's asking, am I dividing by 450? Am I trying to allocate cost to one use or another? Plus, there's commercial in the site, which benefits, like, we'll, we'll, we'll have to tackle that for you, but it's not going to be as
Clear cut.
A clear-cut answer when there's a mix of uses and most of the, well, half of the projects have a mix of uses, I think.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily care for rental versus owner, just because then it gets real complicated, that math.
You know, this tends to what your goal is. You want, you want to see more detached homes in a development than, to subsidize than apartments. That's, that's what I was trying to get at.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's fair answer.
Hopefully.
I frequently hear what's, what's, what's best practice is and what our community's doing is council interested in understanding, what are other communities offering? I mean, the point is, is that I understand that we're a little bit remote from the Ankeny, the Waukees, the metro area, but is there an interest or desire to understand and have Kelly just talk to some?
Absolutely. This is a, if there's any ever a time to understand what other communities are doing, that this, this is that time.
Because I think, honestly, I hear times, well, so-and-so's doing this, and so-and-so's doing this. And I'll talk to mayors at, at peer meetings, and I say, well, no, we're not doing that, we're not doing that, we're doing this. The point is, there seems to be a lack of clarity. And it just seems to be helpful to understand, you know, what is going on also in other communities. So you have that information, and that doesn't mean you have to be bound by it, but at least you have that information in order to process that appropriately.
You have motion on that, or can?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some limits to that, just to be clear. Like, they're not going to review our project and say, how would you treat it?
No, no, no.
I think we have
What's their basic philosophy?
Yeah, we have some good understanding of the philosophies of an Ankeny, Waukees, Weston
It can be surprising.
Types of places that are growing faster. We have a pretty good understanding of what they do or don't do.
And the point is, you may just say, okay, that we're not them, and we're not going, we're going to do something different, we're going to do more so. But at least you have that kind of information, because otherwise, it's going to take a while to get that. And the philosophy is correct. I'm not saying that, okay, if we had this project, what would you do? Which is more or less, you could describe in general or looking for, and.
Yeah, it's going to take some time, but we want you to, you, you got to read this over closely. There's a lot of information. It's only a starting point, but I'm sure all the developers are waiting for an answer. But I don't want to slow down the Greenbrier annexation. We're not going to do that with this. So Jeremy, you got essentially the questions. You'll capture the questions, the council. So, I mean, I think that, if there's any other questions that we want, I don't think we need motion. I think basically you proposed it, we can go ahead and give that to Kelly and move on.
Would it be inappropriate to ask them also to sort of prioritize? I mean, in a list of 12 items, what might be the one that perhaps is the greatest barrier? Like, would we, could we ask them to sort of think through that type of process, too?
Sure, we could ask.
We can. I think, I think the answer is more embedded in the earlier comment of the phasing question. Is it, is it a phase one impediment, or is it a long-term impediment? I think that's probably the more relevant version of that.
Okay.
Because if, if the total amount is $3 million, I don't know that it matters whether it's a water fee or a street improvement cost.
We're going to have to work with them, too, because again, we, we have verified the gap or what the, what the stated gap is. They're going to have to help us understand it. And they have a lot of information that can help us understand a little bit better.
All right. Any other questions?
A lot of work here yet to do.
Yep, there is. All right. Yeah, what you need for a night?
Yeah.
If not, anything else you want before we move on to the next item?
Do you want to have public input?
What? No. This is staff report, and the point is.
I didn't know if anybody was here to speak on this.
Don't worry, don't have some input. Does anyone want to give public input? You can, you're welcome to come up and do it. Anyone want to give public input? Justin?
It's way past my bedtime. Good evening, council. Justin Dodge, Hunziker Companies, 105 South 16th Street. You know, this is a very, very complex topic, and, and we've had several meetings with both Steve and Kelly and, and even Public Works talking through a lot of these topics. I think the key thing for, for us is what's going to make a project work? You know, right now in Auburn Trail, when we looked at it, was it four or five years ago, there were 167 lots where we thought we would have had about 200. And, and a lot of that was the conservation subdivision ordinance. There were different rules of the waters of the U.S. There were stormwater rules from, you know, there were just a whole lot of different factors. It wasn't just, if, if, you know, these five things. No, it was, we need something to give on this list of 20 because every mechanism moves things back and forth. And so since which time you guys have changed your conservation subdivision ordinance, that really, really helped. And now staff is looking at allowing lots along our, the Spine Road that comes down from Rose Prairie. Well, that was a half million dollars worth of road that we had zero revenue coming off of. And all of a sudden, we've got a layout that we just turned into staff a week and a half ago for DRC. And, and so it takes that project that had 167 lots, now I think our latest layout is 187. And so, I mean, that moves the needle a long ways. So every one of these projects, whether they're, you know, any one of the list, they're looking at the exact same topic where it, it's hard to say, you know, well, pick the top five. Well, you can't just pick the top five because, well, if we could do this, then all of a sudden, there's some more revenue here, or, or maybe we do this, or maybe the, you know, there are so many moving parts, but we just need to work through, you know, and like I said, every project's going to be different, but work through with, with Kelly and Steve to figure out, okay, what's the solution for this project? What's the solution for this project? And I think as we get more clarity on some of the variables, then it's going to be able to, we're going to be able to pin down and say, you know what? Hey, this project doesn't need this because these other two things happened. So every project is going to be different. And, and so there's no silver bullet for anything, but, but we appreciate the conversation. You know, this has been quite a ways in the works, and so we appreciate the conversation and continue to, or look forward to continuing to work with everybody on this project, or all these projects.
Right.
It is late. It is way too late for me to go.
And we're not done yet.
Thank you.
Good thing we've got minutes so we can remember what you said.
Anybody else? All right, close public input. I just have one other question. Kelly, that is, Justin's mentioned it. Can you explain the process that we go through or has gone, we, staff go through? Does that going up 20 lots, for example, make some big difference? I mean, I presume. Is that part of the conversation that when developers come, they say, hey, if we could do, this is an impediment, and this is really causing us to not be able to get the yield that we need? And is that kind of a part of?
It has been with Hayden's Preserve, Greenbrier, and Auburn Trail. Historically, no. It's, here's the standards, what
Sure.
This, what, this is what you're allowed to do. We don't, we just say, here's what you're allowed to do, and if they can fit it, they fit it on. This has been a little different because you had to change the conservation ordinance to increase yield.
Right.
I was just
You helped us with doing that.
Yeah, I was just thinking though, that if there's things that don't cost anything in terms of incentives, but can be changed, policy-wise.
That was the goal with the conservation changes, and you found out that wasn't enough.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to tease out what, how, how staff works with the developers and what kind of interchange was back and forth, because, boy, there's other things that could potentially increase yield. And, I mean, everyone at this day knows, we are basically facing, you know, a shotgun from the, sorry, that's the wrong analogy. We are facing pressure from legislature that's going to happen next year. And it's going to be affecting revenue, and it's affecting other things. And so consequently, I just think that if we can find ways to help spur on more development by non-monetary changes that don't necessarily jeopardize water quality or, or other things, we try and do some creative workarounds, that would be a win-win-win, it would seem like. I know some of these are actually, I mean, the, the water buyout, whether you agree or disagree, is immaterial, it's still, that's a hard cost, essentially.
It's a cost.
That's all. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Move on. Item number 48. First reading of ordinance relating to establishing the urban revitalization plan for Southeast Fifth Street. We'll open up public comments. Is anyone that wants to address council on this topic tonight? Seeing that, we'll close public comment. Entertain motion on first reading of ordinance relating to establishing urban revitalization plan for Southeast Fifth.
Move on first.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Vetter.
Aye.
Eddy Hanson.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on. Number 49. Entertain motion on second reading of ordinance relating to a zoning text amendment, modifying billboard standards and creating new digital display standards.
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Garten. Aye.
Junk. Aye.
Vetter.
Aye.
Eddy Hanson.
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll entertain motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4555, amending chapter 28 of the Ames municipal code, section 28.201, to increase drinking water rates by three and a half percent, and section 28.3043, to increase sanitary sewer rates by 5.5% for charges to be billed on or after July 1, 2025.
Move on third.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
Vetter.
Aye.
Eddy Hanson.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Move on disposition, disposition and communications to council. We have, okay, six items. First, Jim Gregory, request for South Lincoln mixed-use district zoning text amendment. Is there interest to take this under consideration and refer it to staff or not?
Have we gotten a memo on?
Yet? No, no, this is going to be you.
Have moved for a memo on this one?
Second.
Those can motion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Seconds from Kyle Hawsworth regarding leadership aims class 38, bike repair stations. May I suggest that, well, if, if council's supportive of this, could this just refer to staff to look into what's involved and then authorize them to work with leadership aims versus coming back with a memo or anything else?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
My, my concern on this, and I love the intent behind this, I don't know how, how much these things actually get utilized. I don't know, Brahman, you can speak to this because you second more than all of us combined, but I
We have one at Watesfield as well, actually. A, a bike repair station like the kind they're proposing. And it does get some use. So, I mean, I, I can't speak to all across the community, but we do have people use it. It's got a pump built in, you know? So it's often simple stuff, just like inflating tires. But, and I don't have a good metric because I'm not outside in the parking lot all day long looking at the bike station, but I would say for sure some use.
I, I'm going to be differential to what Parks and Rec wants to do on this.
Well, it's not our cost, except to maintain it later.
Well.
Public Works.
Public Works, but yeah, it's not
Leadership aims, they're raising funds for it.
When it breaks down, we'll have to replace it.
Put stuff out there that won't, won't be used. That's not helpful. So if, if we think that there's value to it, let's, let's support it. But if there's not, let's not support it.
I think it would go along with our bike roll.
If, if people actually use them, that's, that's sort of my point. I, I just don't
We'll work on it.
Well, the other option is, is if no one, if it's observed, no one's using it in two or three years, you just take it down, or you relocate it someplace else. But if we're building a network of 50-some miles of bike trails and stuff like that, it's might be nice to try and buy something for. Anyway, all right. Motion is made. Second, is there, those papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Next is the Alzheimer Foundation requesting application for
It's the lighting of the van shell.
That wasn't resolved.
No, we turned them down. They're coming to you because the policy you have is that The, the way this came to us, this is a group, a national organization, has no affiliation with a local one. We suggested all they need to do is partner with a local organization and they're in, but.
Right.
I think they're not doing that.
I, I would move that the mayor respond to this and simply say that, that we, um, have offered the advice.
Okay.
An alternative.
And, yeah, and an alternative for having this approved.
Second.
Those who have papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is, uh, HPC requests to sponsor Ames at Glimpse and Size. Steve, can you comment on this one too? We've talked about this before, but.
I think it's, uh, it's a net, you can look at what the event is. The net effect is they're want to use some money from, um, the historic preservation commission has a little money in their budget, but then they need another $500 net and they're talking about moving it forward to next year. I, I, I think you just want to take it out of your contingency fund and not worry about moving money forward for the $500. I don't know, do they need authorization to use the, the first part, uh, from historic preservation?
So there's no, so the HPC has some money, but the event is next fiscal year, so they can't really commit money from this year to next year. That's why this letter was written, was to hope that the, you would put it on an agenda and decide whether you would carry forward funds next year to allow for HPC to spend them next year. That was the thought process we had. And they haven't actually submitted a request for all the funding that they may want either.
So what's the total amount they need to carry?
Put it on a future agenda.
I'm sure. The HPC can't afford everything that we've been told they might ask for. There might be a separate request, which you haven't received for council contingency. Above and beyond the HPC's funding.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I don't know what they're asking for.
We asked for something we haven't gotten yet.
Oh, then you're not prepared to do anything.
I think we'd learn about it if we put it on an agenda, so that's my motion.
I wouldn't say a memo is appropriate, I would say put it on an agenda in June.
But they should tell us what they need, they should write a letter with exactly what they need.
Hopefully the Glimpse Group would actually submit the letter that you want for the full picture.
There's a motion made to place on a future agendas or second.
Second.
All right, those who have papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
And can I read into that, that you would urge the Glimpse Group to, uh, make the full request known instead of just dealing with a small amount of an HPC budget? That would be important.
Right.
Good, thank you.
I think that was part of the agenda, um, part of the motion, Kelly.
Thanks.
All right, number five, some guy named Kelly Deekman did a request for zoning text amendment exception.
I did not request it, we wrote a memo.
You gave us some memo.
Okay.
So you want to put it on next agenda, you want to drop it here?
I move, we take no further action. Second.
Those who have papers, motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And the last one, we have no choice in the matter.
No, they're just asking, is work with the city attorney's office and develop changes to the code to reflect the new state.
Have we put this on?
Regarding fireworks.
Second.
Those who have papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, uh, reports of governing body, Discover Ames, anything?
So, uh, the director of Discover Ames, um, let us know that there is a proposal that he is going to be making that would be for the development of flat, additional flat space, conference center in Ames. There's an informational meeting on Thursday morning, I will be attending at 7:30.
Okay. AREA?
No meeting yet.
Oh yeah, it's this week.
All right, Story County Emergency Management. Currently, the emergency operations center is located in the basement of Story County Courthouse. That's where they go in case of, uh, derecho, you name it, they're all set up. They have been looking into potentially relocating that into a standalone building, which needs to be stormproof, and they're finding out that that comes with a fairly high price tag. So they are reevaluating that, um, project wisely. I mean, to give an idea, they have like $300,000 or $400,000 set aside and they got an estimate of, I think, north of $2 million, so.
I think so.
So anyway, the good news is the Story County Courthouse is stout and meets that criteria. Another thing is, is that there's a, they've been very proactive, one of the staff members. We have a stop the bleed, um, program where you have, you know, uh, stop the bleed kits. And they have been very proactive working with public entities, school districts, school buses to try and get something, you know, on the, uh, available. And there's been a great receptivity by a number of the, uh, local partners. So they continue to work very hard, uh, at that. And I did ask and they brought up, um, is there some way in terms of weather-related emergency sheltering plans for those who may be experiencing homelessness? And, um, they're really, they're not set up, the emergency management is not set up to operate something like that. They could potentially coordinate something, um, versus actually hosting it. They have no facility that could handle that. And there was an update this afternoon that, um, I was in a meeting with, with PA talking about things are going on here in the community and there is some discussion in terms of what we can do for hot weather, you know, sheltering. And, um, long-term looking at cold weather and, and hot weather, but, um, it really didn't go, um, really anywhere, uh, because they really didn't have any power to do much, you know, about that. But the reason I asked that you put on the agenda is because, you know, there's people that are in other communities in Story County that may be, that may not be sheltered. And how can we help them? So, um, and the last thing is, is that, um, they are very interested in what's going on with, with the resource recovery, um, potentially in terms of how it's going to impact, um, them. And, uh, I sent an email to Justin here a while back asking for some feedback and he gave a really great response. I passed on to, um, they were asking some questions about what the per capita cost might be, uh, if there's any savings, if they require, um, mandatory recycling to try and reduce some of that waste, whether there be any credit that comes back. So there, there were some really creative, um, suggestions and questions raised. But, uh, it's become a pretty good forum to engage in conversations with, uh, almost all the communities in the, uh, in Story County. Transit, anything from Transit?
Emily, you got anything?
Oh, yes, I do. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hi.
So we did the field contract for FY26 that was on consent agenda tonight. And then the approving of the preliminary plans for the fire protection improvement project. Grant applications for FTA statewide grants. A contract for updating our real-time information system to make it more efficient. And we've elected an AAMPO representative and a new, uh, president and vice president.
Who's that, Emily? I forgot, who's the new president?
I'm the new president.
Yeah, she's the new president. Emily's the new president.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do they double your pay? I know the answer to that question. Anything else from, uh, Transit?
Uh, nothing I can think of, I think that was it.
All right, so since you have the microphone, why don't you kick off our council comments?
Alrighty, well, I'm back home, so I have just getting settled into the internship, but, um, I will be, I'm going to try and be there for as many city council meetings in person as I can. There's some flexibility there. We have some projects that we're looking on over the summer, but not a whole lot of updates from me really.
All right, thanks for hanging in there.
Yes.
Gloria?
I have a couple of things. First of all, tomorrow, Discover Ames is hosting a tour of four, four Des Moines area recreation centers. And I think that's going to be enlightening to see what's being done elsewhere. Also regarding the, the vote for 113 North Dakota, I just wanted to go on record saying the reason I voted no on that project was primarily because of the concerns that I have about erosion and the impact on Clear Creek in the future, which we can't really know now. And so I'm hoping that we as a city will monitor those impacts on the watershed as this project matures and, and becomes, um, occupied. Another issue that came up that was raised was, uh, our commitment to our designation as a Tree City USA. And I would really like to see us add that discussion as part of our goal setting because if it's part of our values, then we should commit to our values with funding and policy decisions. But I don't know if it's part of our values. So I would just like to move that we add that to the agenda for goal setting.
Add what to the goal?
What's that?
I'm sorry, add what?
Add a discussion of, um, our designation as Tree City USA. And if we see that pursuit of, uh, trees, tree preservation as a value that we hold here in the city. And, you know, if it, if it does mean something to us or it doesn't, then we could move forward from there with either doing more things or not.
Sir, second?
Second.
I mean, I, we have an arborist, I mean, I think our, our actions are really very supportive. Uh, I don't think we're starting from scratch. Is there something specific that you would want us to add to what we're?
I don't feel like, um, cutting down old growth trees equals the same as planting new trees. And I do think that there's nothing right now that we can do about preserving old growth trees. I don't know if council's committed to preserving old growth trees. And clearly we've got neighborhoods that consider this a quality of life issue. And so I just want us to have a discussion about whether this is something that we should be looking at for our values or not.
All right, those who have papers, the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mayor, I think carried 4-2.
Sorry.
Motion carried 4-2.
Oh, um, that's it, that's all I've got.
Rollin?
Uh, not, nothing for me.
Nita?
Just, um, a Juneteenth flyer was left for you, just so that you have information about that. One of the activities that council is supporting, so thank you.
Well, and you should, should be asking for volunteers too.
There were tables there, we were thinking.
Yes, yeah, and the city will be well represented there. And yes, there is a QR code that you can scan if you'd like to volunteer. We would love to have you volunteer.
Well, this, I think, in our desire to try and reach out to others in the community, may be a great opportunity to be just pitting in that, even if it's just for an hour or two, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Amber?
Nothing for me.
A couple of quick things for all the people who are watching still. We had a huge number of volunteers, uh, come out for Memorial Day, uh, to help make that happen. And also just tremendous support from city staff, so thank you, everyone participated in that. Um, a couple of things, um, for the council's calendar. The, uh, uh, annual meeting of Iowa League of Cities is coming up September 17th to 19th. And, uh, it's in Des Moines this year and encourage people to put that on their calendar. I don't know if housing is an issue because it's, it's in Des Moines, so I assume we would just be driving, uh, not, not staying. But I encourage people to still put that on their calendar. It's a, I've gone, I think, every year when I'm at council and it's always been terrific. The second thing I want to point out, um, I encourage council members who are up for reelection to communicate to the community what your intentions are. So I announced in January, um, a couple of years ago, my intention not to run because I want to send a clear signal. Um, it's now the end of May and I encourage, uh, council members who are up for reelection to communicate that. The candidate filing process begins on August 11th. But for people who are considering, uh, a run for city council, there's a lot of process and time involved in that. So I think we, I think we benefit the community by either communicating, by saying either we're going to stay or we're going to create open seats. So I encourage council members to, to consider doing that. That's all I have.
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Well, Tim, I, I announced about three months ago, I'm running for, for reelection, so that's, uh, it's a good encouragement. Number one, Dr. Winterstein announced that she's retiring. I just want to, um, I know it's not going to be until January 2nd, so I'll have a chance to interact with her, but I just want to say she has been a fantastic partner, you know, working together with the city. There's been a true town and gom relationship. And, um, Dan Colhane mentioned Daisy coming, you know, to Boone. She indicated that Iowa State is integrally involved, I mean, integrally involved with, uh, conversations. It's going to be a great research opportunity for their dairy, um, program. And in fact, she's anticipating that's going to really help that, uh, grow quite a bit. Uh, secondly, uh, Tim, congratulations. Thank you for your leadership on the Memorial Day program. It was a fantastic, um, ceremony. We had perfect weather and, um, the keynote speaker, I don't know who picks him or her, but they, he did a great job. And Tim serves as president of Ames Patriotic and I know it's, you put a lot of time into it, but, uh, it was moving to see all the people and all the flags, so. And, uh, one more thing is that, um, the state legislature has passed multiple laws affecting the city and one of them affects RPAC. And so I, I'd like to have a motion that, uh, direct Mark to revise the ordinance regarding RPAC in light of new state law changes.
So moved.
Second.
Those who have papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then he'll be able to articulate what that may or may not include when he does either do, sends his, uh, but we have to make those changes.
I'd like to go on record saying I strongly oppose what the legislature has done. I think the, what Steve did in creating this in coordination with Chief Huff was unbelievably brilliant and a very appropriate response. And once again, the idea of home rule is being undermined. Ames, the city of Ames should be able to define what it believes is best for its citizens and it was working very well. And I'm, I'm appalled that the legislature thinks it's important for them to micromanage what we're doing here in Ames.
All right. Mark, does, uh, council have a justification for going into closed session tonight?
Yes, you do. Iowa Code Section, uh, 20.17 subsection 3 allows the council to go into closed session to discuss, uh, collective bargaining strategy.
Okay, is there a motion to go in a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Junk.
Aye.
Betcher.
Aye.
Edie Hansen.
Aye.
Rollins.
Aye.
Corriere.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
All right.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
All right.[1047.22]